Yo, yo. It's gonna look like I'm in like, in hiding. But that's what it is. Let's see.
It is indeed a pleasure to have this privilege to play here for you. And we intend to give you a very fine program. So just settle back, relax, and enjoy the moment.
I'm late. In terms of there. Bring that down. Yeah, yeah, yeah. Let's play.
Producing the kind of quality affordable housing in the city of Charleston.
I'm gonna look at the agenda.
We have had many ceremonies together, many checks exchanged together over the years.
What up?
And I just wanted to say thank you because I'm probably one of the few people on council that has worked directly with you over the years. And to the chairman, the city.
Yo, what's up?
You guys, I appreciate it. Thank you.
I'm not gonna be sober during this.
Councilmember Patel.
O'Brady's.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. And if you think, um, Ed Cronberg is only about affordable housing, I can tell you, he's one of the main reasons.
I'm gonna mute this. This is, okay, so they're on the, they're at the Cronberg part. Unless y'all really wanna hear about this dude from housing, um, who's retiring, they're just doing a little ceremonial proclamation. Let's get to the, to the agenda. So if they're at the, yeah, I was late, but, so we did this. Yeah, so they're on D. Look at that. It's eleven after five and they already on D. Okay. What's up? Yeah, I will not be sober tonight.
Doesn't admit that Mr. Cronberg is continuing his.
Hold on. Hello? Hold on, y'all.
Joining the board of Low Country Local First.
Somebody trying to walk into my apartment. Hold up.
All over the community for local ones.
Great. So, uh, councilmember Mitchell.
Yes, Mayor, councilmembers. I have worked with, uh, the housing authorities since nineteen seventy-four and, um, working on Charles degree. That's from the housing authority that owns Charles degree. And, uh, Rick with Dawn. I remember when Dawn got hired back during that time when Mr. Stacks was here. And, uh, I've worked, I used to handle all the, uh, when people be evicted off the product, off the public housing, so to speak, I was acting as the judge.
Shit.
See if they're gonna be evicted or not, and also assist them handling delinquency rental. And help recap a lot of money to the housing authority that people had owed. So we go way back, Don and I, and I'm gonna continue working with the new CEO when he comes about. We're gonna meet together and we're gonna.
I didn't know they had this many camera angles. They always say this.
Because we have a lot of, I have a lot of public housing in my district where I represent. So we'll be working together a whole lot with the new grad program and whatever else is coming forward. So I would thank you, Don, for what you did. And to Cronberg, thank you. We have spoken a lot over the period of years. So I would thank both of them.
Oh, no, I'm putting myself.
I'll still be around working with you. Thank you.
Well, thank you for those comments. And thank you, Don. And I attended his retirement party the other night and his family got together and, um, presented him this really hot Mustang. He is ready to roll. He is ready to roll off into retirement and, and he's not counting the days, but there's only ten left, right? The, the last announcement I wanted to share with council and, and the public is that, um, the shout out to our finance department, our CFO, Amy Wharton, as the city got reviewed again, as we do on an annual basis.
Text someone, tell them what, to wake up.
Moody's and Standard and Poor gave us a triple A, uh, credit rating for the city of Charleston. And given. Given the financial.
S T, S two G.
That's really.
Oh, swear to God.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, that's.
They know they're on camera. I don't think they care, Evelyn.
Challenges was not what she faced. She failed to stay.
Oh, look, Amber's in the back. You see Amber in the back?
She gets pulled us through.
I see Jonathan Mitchell in the back.
Past couple of years in particular, through that crisis. And I just.
Not to be like asshole. I just don't, at this point, I'm like, they gotta be watching this stuff back.
All right. So next up is our public hearing.
What's up, new follower?
Ten of these this evening.
New follower. If you're watching live, you friend or foe, what's goodie?
Morgan or Mr. Summerfield, I presume, will be making presentations. He'll, he'll be doing that on the screen. All right, Mr. Morgan.
Oh, yeah, yeah. I feel like I need to watch something else.
Yes, sir. Mr. Mayor, can you all see this on your screen?
Great. Thank you.
Can you all see the, the seal on your screen there in council chambers?
We can. Can we get a little more volume, though, on your?
Hey, how are you?
Yes, sir. Okay. All right. We're gonna go through these now. Here we go. All right. E one. It's a rezoning at five eighteen East Bay Street and eighty-one Washington Street.
Jesus.
It's two thirds of an acre. It's a request to rezone from light industrial and mixed use workforce housing, uh, and also from the five story and W P.
I know the zoning stuff, um, as, as Evelyn wants, wants to remind me, the zoning is where it's at, kids. Um. I just can't eat my broccoli tonight with zoning. So how about we do this? How about we do a revisit of the bid and keep our eye on? Cause remember they packed. So I told y'all, come prepared. I've got cake. I've got the biggest glass of Moscato I've poured in a month, um, and one little, one hard pour. Uh, how about we, how about we, uh, Morrisoco? Is this Morrisoco? How about we, uh, revisit the bid situation? Like, just get, get more literate on that. We didn't kinda cover it this morning. For those who didn't watch this morning, let me not take it for granted. Some of y'all don't watch in the morning. Um, maybe we need to revisit that and come back to see where they're at. But we know that the agenda is jam packed. It's, and they started promptly and they're moving, they're moving with a certain speed, right? So let me, uh, let me see, let me see. They stack it so heavy. I mean, and before Christmas at that, right? It's not like you had a whole pandemic to kinda like, let me stop. All right. So let me, I'm gonna let that rock. And then I'm gonna look up that whole, um, that Gotham thing again. That sight see, um, that sight see posted and shared. Yeah. Hey, what's up, Julie? What's up? What's up? I appreciate you saying that. Yeah, yeah, yeah. What's up? All, everybody who's not dropped. Hey, what up? Um, Rugby, how you doing? Rugby, that hat had to come out this week. You said you need a Magnum and a straw for this. Wait, what kind of Magnum? Wait, what? What kind of Magnum? Stop. You. All right. Um, definitely, definitely. What's up, Michelle? Hey, hey, hey. Oh, it's good to see the family. Look, I don't, again, there, I wanna, first I'm gonna see where they at on the, on the agenda. So we just checking in for those who just, uh, hopped on. So they moving, they moving on time. And let me tell you something. I'm gonna take credit. Cause now that they know people watching, like, and they know, 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 it feel like, you know what I mean? Plus, it's the holidays. Hopefully they're trying to get through stuff fast. And they don't wanna be there all night. But this agenda is jam packed. So they over here with the, um, the mixed use, this first item, number one, I guess. They got numbers one through ten to get through. Then public hearing matters. And then you're gonna get to the citizen participation period. All right. So we got ten zoning. Zoning is where it's at, kids. I need to start eating my broccoli. Um, but half, let me be real with you. Half this shit is, not shit. Let me not do that. Let me not oversimplify this. Cause I, I've been doing that lately and I gotta chill. Um, but to me, it's just like a cascade of what, um, it feels like the chips falling, the chips that were already set up, uh, forty years ago, just falling right now, where they may, given the, the Tiff district bullshit. I don't know. I, I think that's what overwhelmed me. I shouldn't have that level of despair. I should still want to engage. What's up, Paul? Uh-huh. Couldn't do this without me. That's a lot of pressure, but I appreciate it. All right. They still on E one. Let me unmute it.
We've met with, uh, Vandy Ransford and some of the neighborhood association. We are not in the Mizzou Raggsboro neighborhood. We are across the street from them. We've reached out.
Wait a minute. So for every zoning issue, for every zoning, um, item. Every zoning item is there like public comment on every zoning item?
Well.
Thank you.
I'm halfway there. So, uh.
Cut your mic. Your mic's been cut, sir.
Thank you. We'll let you know if we have any questions.
They ain't playing with that.
Yes, sir. Good evening.
Anthony G. Bryant.
Just do always.
Twenty-one, twenty-three Cortland Avenue, Charles, South Carolina, two nine four zero three.
Y'all don't give your whole address.
Planning a tennis meeting at all tonight. But I did not receive, even at post industry provided notice of this meeting. And I did not receive from the Fourth Circuit Court of Appeals response regarding my suit against them, in which they provided notice, notice to this body. And therefore, my deeper concern now is for people's free speech at this, at this dais. Rather than not public safety with a homeland security, uh, relationship.
What's this?
Which is like eight hundred and fifty-two sections Homeland Security and about thirty thousand section of violent crime control law enforcement act nineteen ninety-four, which I cited. And my deeper concern for the, for, for the city of Charleston, I don't really care about how you vote or rule, is that income is not a protected class. Okay? So anything you do, an income approach, cost approach, rocket peril.
I'm lost when this dude talks.
Doesn't protect anybody.
Can y'all, are y'all, do y'all know, are y'all familiar? What's up, Ally? Um, can y'all let me know? Like, what's good? Cause I don't know when this dude talk. Like, am I not like, am I uninitiated? I have, I have no, every time he speaks, I get a little lost.
Well, Ben Chase, representing the family of Mars Oakl LLC. Uh, the family's been a good steward of the city of Charleston. This property is a little bit of an eyesore. We're consolidating the properties on a street. We're actually moving the property from one five story district to another. So we're not moving properties to a different zoning to ask for the sixth floor. We also have a very good relationship with the parking. Uh, we requested the parking to get the sixth floor to have two floors of parking, not to build more units. We've cut off units off the front of the building and putting them on top. And that will put less pressure on the adjacent neighborhoods. We're very respectful of that. Um, I talked to Robert Mitchell in between planning meetings. Uh, this was vetted by two planning meetings. Both were successful votes. And what we did was we brought a workforce component in and we have onsite sustainable parking. We're very excited on the project. Thanks for your support.
Thank you, sir.
I don't like that.
Anyone else, I could be heard. Yes, sir.
I don't know.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. My name is James Wilson with the Wumble Bond Dickinson Law Firm. On behalf of the applicant, um, I just wanted to add a couple of quick points. First is that, uh, on the East Bay Street side of the property.
So to that point, I don't know if they're all.
Organizing play.
I don't know if they're all gonna go to, go this, this long. Um, this is a lot. This is just the, that's the Morrisoco. Let's go to the, uh, let's go to the, to the PDF. One more again. One more again. I'm already like kinda cranky. Yeah, the Morrisoco is number one. Jesus. So wait, so with every zoning issue, they can just, okay, what y'all drinking? Drop in the chat. You watching? How you doing? We gonna get back to it. We just, we, we here for two things specifically. We're here for it all. Typically, we'd wa, I'd watch probably all of it. Um, and just like be a grownup. Um, but I really do want to have folks kinda, I wanna revisit that, that article or that piece on bids. And I want to get ready for the S E, the Special Commission on Equity Inclusion and Racial Conciliation. We know that's part M, like down to the M M M. Hmm. What's this? What? Did they just amend this? Hmm. All right. M L L, L. Jesus Christ. And then we gotta do all these too. Fatigue is, is intentional. You can't tell me nothing. Vodka and grapefruit? Let's go. Woo. Ow. Cup of ginger tea. Ah, cause your guts can't handle this mess. I had ginger tea this morning. That's what I was sipping on this morning. Tea, I put, I put crushed ginger in, um, the hot, uh, tea, the tea water and steeped it, whatever. Like, definitely ginger is pretty good for your guts and inflammation. My ankles love it. All right. Let me, let me switch, though. Real quick. Yeah. I say real quick. They gonna be out here. Anything. Multiple liquids. I feel like I have to have a Gatorade, a Pedialyte. I'm not drinking that hard. I mean, this is just Moscato. It's not, please believe me. I wish it was a whiskey neat. Um, but let's go to this, yeah, cause this, this gonna be a minute. They still on one. All right. And they got ten to get through. Yo, and if y'all gotta leave and come back, you can do that. Like, your cookie decorating? That's so cute. Okay. Hey, Breehan, do I have to knock? Do I not have, like, I have to keep it clean? Is it family time? Family time? Right? So this morning, for those who didn't watch, um, we were trying to get caught up on bids. I am not, I was, I didn't know how they operated. I understood with this whole new alliance and business alliance. I understood what, what, what they were angling to do, I think, on a very broad level. I think us, all of us who are very leery, you, oh, you driving? Beer waiting. Yeah. And take it easy when you get home, Mexi. Um, yeah. So, um, I think we all understand that when we see, when we see certain people align, right? When we see the, you know, Navarro and, and the C V B and some other usual suspects align, we already like scratching our heads like, I don't know. So, um, we knew that the, 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 um, alliance and all these different words they using to kind of, to kinda hide the fact that this a bid. Um, we knew that it was, would, would have unfortunate consequences for most of Charleston, specifically, uh, small businesses. This morning, you also heard me lift up the need for like organizations or, or at least my expectation, and maybe I need to manage that. Um, you know, there was an expectation of local groups like, uh, Low Country Local First. Again, I wanna say that I'm hugely respectful. Like, I, I respect them. I felt the need to preface it only because there, there are some really deeply personal relationships there that I don't take for granted. And I know that they, I know their values. I know how they move. Um, but I, I would love to see, um, the culture that is L L F, Low Country Local First, really shift from just being, you know, everybody's buddy to there has to be an accountability component to the work they do. And maybe there is, but I'm not quite sure. Also, um, I wanna shout out to, um, shout out to Honor. Honor, um, I didn't see that posting courier. And this all ties in, believe me, I, I have no doubt that it's, it's all related. Posting Courier, education, not lab, education, uh, editorial. I think there was a recent, yeah, this is it. Um, I wanted to read this too, while I had y'all, while I had y'all's rapt attention as we, as we go back and forth. Okay, they on two. They on two. Let's unmute. Let's unmute for a second.
Okay, ma'am. Um, here it is in the, uh, new city plan. Again, it's in our, um, suburban edge designation, which is less than four units an acre. So it meets that requirement. The area that is, uh, the, um.
I yelled like it was Christmas. They're on two. It's like, they're on two, but then they gotta get to.
Conserved and not built in.
Items.
So that is, uh, in line with the city plan. And here is an aerial of the site. There's already been some borrowed pit construction on the site. And you see how the adjoining developments have, uh, links that will be made through this project. So it has always been master planned to have, uh, that connectivity.
I saw Tucky Trot Road.
This portion of the site developed as well.
No, this is the John's Island. Ooh.
Developments. Uh, here is the PUD itself, uh, where you have the, uh, single family residential.
I'm gonna mute it again and get back to like the, uh, you got your earbuds. Okay. Yeah. We gotta take breaks, y'all. This going, this, this is a marathon, not a sprint. But they are moving. At least we're gonna get close to, to public period. So we wanna look out for some familiar faces when they get to the public comment period, rather. Um, we wanna look for familiar faces. We wanna listen to some, um, I don't know, dog whistles from maybe some people who are opposing like the commission, or we're gonna listen to some dog whistles, listen for some dog whistles when discussing the bid. Um, yeah, we're gonna, we're gonna do all of that. Um, absolutely, absolutely. So, um, we read a little bit of this this morning. This helped us break down the bid. So we're gonna get ready for that. But I wanted to read this real quick, real quick. Yeah, yeah. You learned quite a bit. I hope, um, right steps, uh, be taken. You too. Be blessed. I didn't say too much, but thank you. Whoever, thank you, new follower. I didn't say too much this time, but we gonna get to it. All right. All right. So, yeah. So editorial. So this is stat. So yeah, this just, this just came out. I took a little quick nap. The worst, the worst nap ever. I'm usually a pro napper. And today I took the worst nap ever. I'm paying for it now. Cause I don't know how much I got. But I'm gonna have to stick around. All right. So Charleston County residents can be excused if they aren't excited. Oh, wow. So I'm assuming this is about daring. See, this, so when we question, when, when, when my, um, education advocates chime in and, and, and send me information and Dr. Hale is sending me information and I'm reading, a wolf at the schoolhouse door, I get some pushback from people who work for these influential institutions. And I get it. We, we, we all wanna have a sense of pride. I got crazy neighbors. We all want, we all wanna have a sense of pride when it comes to like where we work and what we do. I get that. Um, but I think a lot of people getting defensive because they thought they were signing up for one thing. And, you know, like with anything, there's, there's really no purity. There's no purity. Shit, if we, if we're, if we're, if we're, every day, if people, if leftists like me are negotiating whether or not our, you know, can ethical consumption exist under capitalism, right? If we're, if we're interrogating that every day, like, just in terms of us being consumers and what we consume, not just with money, but like with our eyeballs and other stuff, that's now currency too. Um, you know, you know, if we're negating or negotiating that terrain, it's not unrealistic to imagine that you probably doing the same thing with, with your job. Like, you probably are going through everything like, how, how, how real is my job? How, how thorough are they? How, how well do they walk the walk and whatnot? And so like, I think sometimes when I read, um, like this really like, um, when I read people saying, oh, no, 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 CCF is just doing this. They're not doing that. Um, and, and then when you see how, how influential, how largely influential, um, CCF is in terms of shaping education policy, they no longer have an argument. Your, your argument is invalid. They, they are not this wholesome, this is not Girl Scout cookies, even though all these major nonprofits can be problematic, right? Right? Yeah. And Brian, you used to be a pro napper? Yeah. I'm, I'm still in there. I just had a bad, I had a bad day today. Oh, my God. I'm, I'm damn near narcoleptic. Not trying to be, um, ableist either. Like, I could just, all I need is a weighted blanket, lavender, and a, and an eye mask. And I'm out. That's it. I sleep anywhere I want. All right. All right. So let me, let me read this. So I, I'm, I'm assuming this is, I'm assuming the CCF is in this. I'm assuming. But I, I could be wrong. I could be wrong. And I said all that preamble that, because, and for those who just joined us, yes, we are talking about city council. But as they take comment on the zoning items, there's ten zoning items that, um, have to be, um.
It makes a lot of sense. So I, I hope.
Um, ten before we get to public, the public comment period. So we'll have it on mute. So if you came here, yeah, city council is not, is not cinematic. It's not, it's not, I will give them credit. They started on time. They moving through the issues. They still on issue two. It looks like it. Um, yeah, River Road, they still on John's Island. Yeah. Let me see. Oh, now they on three. They're on three.
It's at the intersection of River Road and Maybank Highway. It's the Village at Fenwick PUD. It's an amendment. This is property the city of Charleston has bought for affordable housing. And this is a relatively minor amendment to this planned unit development.
Okay. We keep an eye on that. Yeah, yeah, yeah. What's up? What up, Mikey? I got your email. We'll talk. Good job by you, though. All right. So let's just read this real quick. And, and, and believe me, all this shit is linked, y'all. So just, just bear with me. Cause where there's, where there's CCF, there's Navarro. Where there's Navarro, there's CCF. So just, just get ready. So Charleston County School, uh, Charleston County residents can be excused if they aren't excited, excited about the new reimagine schools initiative that the school board endorsed last week. It does, after all, it does, after all, have a bit of here we go again feel. Okay. Oh, you can be excused if you aren't excited. Oh, they're saying it's okay. Huh. Let's keep reading. Okay. I don't get tone when I read too. Y'all know the subtleties lost on me. I'm real, um, I can be real dense when it comes to like reading sarcasm. All right. It does, it does, after all, feel a bit like here we go again. Let's just read it. Okay. Has, you know, just two years after the Charleston County School District approved parts of Mission Critical Plan, uh, to improve education at low performing schools while also addressing long simmering, while also addressing long simmering concerns about equity in the highest performing approval, approval that came after two years of formulating plans, talking to, uh, talk, uh, taking public comments, excuse me, formulating the plan. Uh, the school board has now tentatively, tentatively agreed to embark on a whole new plan to plan how to fix some of the district's lowest performing schools. Okay. And it says here, you gotta watch too, how they write about education. Um, all about like, when, especially when they emphasize like waste, that, you know, if you can remember from when we, when we did have to listen to, I made you listen to, um, old boy, homeboy from, uh, Fitz News, um, how he was always talking about the cost per student, cost, cost, the cost of this, and da, 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 da. Each kid getting it, da, 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 da. When they start doing that, we gotta watch for that too. Cause that's just, um, that's us, some other bullshit. All right. So, um, but we, uh, what we need to keep in mind is what, let me read it from here. What we need to keep in mind is, is that, uh, while Mission Critical appropriately focused attention on our most struggling schools and has made some promising changes in some of, um, in some of them, in some of the schools, it got significant blowback from parents, teachers, community members who complained they were shut out of the process, partly as a result of those frustrations. The district rejected or delayed some crucial components. And then COVID hit. Okay. All right. Lauren Hertrich, did I say it right? Who was elected to the school board a year ago. Is she, is she a Coalition for Kids, um, candidate? School board a year ago? I can't remember. And was instrumental in helping bring reimagine before the board. Oh, she's a Coalition for Kids candidate. Okay. It calls it a start. Mission Critical had some success, but not the success that we're looking for, she said, uh, she told us. Um, and I think everyone has had a chance. Let me just do this. I think everyone's had a chance. Da, 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 to kinda step back and look at it, the lessons we learned. Also, everyone has seen the impacts of the pandemic. So under the plan. So under the plan, up for approval on January 10th, the coastal, oh, the what? No. Okay, under the plan, excuse me, under the, under the plan, up for final, up for final approval on January 10th, the Coastal Community Foundation would convene three commissions, each made up of school board and constituent board members, teachers, parents, community members to gather public input. A lot of people are like saying, well, Mika, that's not, that's not a problem. That's a good thing. Okay. Okay. It sounds great. It does. If there wasn't a profit motive attached to it, right? If there wasn't, if, if this wasn't like, also gonna usher in a number of sweeping changes that would eventually lead to more public schools closing and so on and so forth, and the school privatization moving forward, um, and warp speed, right? Under the plan, up for final approval on January 10th, the Coastal Community Foundation would convene three commissions, each made up of school board, um, school board constituent board members, teachers, parents, and community members to gather input, excuse me, to gather public input and create turnaround plans. So it seemed like they took Mission Critical and made sure that it was more participatory. But it seemed like maybe that's just, um, for optics. It might be, it might be, they might actually use the, um, value added feedback from these, these, uh, listening sessions. So let me, you know, that's, that's also a possibility. But it looks like they're, what I'm trying to say is that it looks like they're trying to show you that, hey, this is not Mission Critical. We're not locking anybody out, right? So I think, I do think that that was for us to see more so than anything else. The Commissions for Constituent Districts nine, 20, and 23, um, in Johns Island, downtown Charleston, Hollywood areas, what do those have in common? Um, would bring their proposals back to the school board by June. Okay? So I wanna fast forward, I do. Oh, wait, wait, hold up. Foundation CEO Darren Goss told the school, and he's been getting a lot of, a lot of like, um, a lot of press placement lately. Foundation CEO, CCF CEO, y'all, Darren Goss told the school board that the reimagining process was designed to start and finish with community input and would be built around three key ideas. So this is according to Darren, right, and CCF, who are not qualified to really weigh in, but we looking at him as an education guru, right? Right? We're looking at him as an education guru. For what reason? We don't know, because he gets paid quarter million dollars? Okay. All right, all students are capable of learning. Um, so they say they brought the, these three key areas, these three key areas. Uh, schools must be tailored to particular needs of a student, particularly in low income communities. And students who were, uh, behind, before COVID fell further behind in the past year and to have, and so needed dramatic intervention of recovery and support. Mr. Goss and Superintendent Greta Postal, excuse me, Jerita Postalway um, were key advocates of the new law passed early this year. We saw, we saw Darren give a shout out with that. Pass, where you had, um, I think, yeah, McMaster showed up with Ben Navarro. Remember, remember Ben Navarro is not your favorite, not your friendly neighborhood billionaire, right? We know that. We know that he's an aggressive debt collector. And he, um, as, as one of the smaller debt collection agencies that exists, he actually was more aggressive than some of the bigger ones during the pandemic. Um, and he was, he was, they, they were ruthless, right? And so much so that the Wall Street Journal caught wind of it and made, and posted about it, or wrote about it, right? So, um, that's what they referring to right here. Y'all know this. If you watch mic'd up in the morning, you know this. So, um, let me read it again. Mr. Goss and Superintendent Postalway were key advocates of the new law passed earlier this year that allows school districts to have multiple schools of innovation and like Meeting Street Elementary, um, at Brentwood. And Mr. Goss clearly hopes that this process will result in transforming more schools into schools of innovation. That's the whole plan, right? Managed by nonprofits. That's important right there. That's huge. So I don't, I don't want my schools managed by nonprofits. I want my school managed by school board members that aren't bought and paid for by dark money. I want, I want initiatives and ideas to come from people that are not bought and paid for by dark money, Darren Goss and CCF. Sorry, CCF people. Hey, Honor, yep, yep, yep. There you go. Mm-hmm. Yeah, Goss drove Mission Critical process as well, right? Okay, I didn't know that. Okay. Uh, when you say Mr. Goss, you hear, uh, you hear, Mr. Goss. Why should I call him that? That's the nickname. Uh, no, did that sound bad to me? Make sure that doesn't have any, no, yeah, Mr. Goss. It does sound like, because I use that word a lot too, right? That's my fake ass Yiddish wannabe ass. All right, let's see what, are they on number four? They on number four?
Thank you, Christopher. Um, I would simply add for council's information, well, after we decided we were moving forward with an accessory dwelling unit ordinance.
Okay, so, um, all right, so yeah, yeah, yeah. Okay, Alan, what you dropping in the chat here? Oh, yeah, yeah. Some resources. I'm gonna click this link. Shout out, Honor. Appreciate you. Okay, so yeah, here we go. So corporate influence on C C S D, right? Corporate, I'm gonna, I know I have this already, like multiple copies, but I'm gonna have to save it again because I wanna be able to manipulate it and enlarge it the way I want to. Thank you so much, though. Let me go back to the, the caption over here, because I wanna see this before I dip, um, before I leave, get, get out of Facebook. All right, so vet your, vet your vote Charleston. Follow it on Facebook, y'all, right? This is back for, this is from back in May. How is Charleston County School Districts getting away with replacing public engagement with corporate influence? Remember when I said this about like, even when it comes to our, our advocacy within government, they wanna put nonprofits in a place of where government should be. And this is not about a big government conversation. This is about what our, what our systems are designed to do. They're supposed to take care of people. It's the reason why your city, you pay taxes so your city will come and fill the potholes or put, put a speed bump in your neighborhood or, or, you know, like that's what, that's what your government, your local government is supposed to do is make sure you got fresh clean water and make sure, you know, trash is picked up or there's a facility for you to drive your trash, you live in Wamala and so on and so forth, right? Like government is supposed to, that's not, that's not big government. Those aren't the social security safety nets. That's not, you know, the, the bullshit ass, um, empty, you know, bad faith arguments against, um, socialism and, and, and all that other stuff. Um, that's just basic shit. Like, yeah, yeah, Schoolhouse Rock, welcome to my audition. And like, so now we're seeing, we're seeing for, um, them trying to normalize that, no, 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 this should be managed by, even the, even the Posting Courier is, well, we, no, even, especially the Posting Courier, who's getting, I wish there was another paper in Charleston to write about what this, like, I really wish there was like, like, because, because Posting Courier, like, they, like, they don't disclose their financial, like, conflicts of fucking interest. Like, I, I really wanna read about the education. Like, like, this is, this is also too, like, I'm not equipped, right? I'm a, I'm a, I'm a blowhard, I'm a gadfly, I'm an irritant, and all the other stuff. But like, I'm not equipped to do a deep dive into like the conflicts between Posting Courier and some of these, some of these, um, nonprofits. And I really wish somebody wrote about the Education Lab. Um, Education Lab, Posting Courier, like, we just revisit, we'll revisit their pub on it. Like, not, like, there's no other, like, investigative, there's no other critical nothing. Again, like I said this morning, this is why I feel like I have to overcorrect half the fucking time. So I'm trying to find the, the Education Lab, um, announcement, like, hey, we're, we're, you know, we're launching this Education Lab. Let me see. And we gonna get back to it, y'all. Let's check in.
And, you know, guys, at the end of the day, y'all have heard me talk about this often. I'm trying not to belabor it too much, but the end of the day, price is a product of supply and demand. And we have a major supply side problem in this city. We don't have any problem on the demand side. Plenty of people that wanna live in the city of Charleston as close to the peninsula or on the peninsula as they can. We've got to find a way to get more supply on the market. And, you know, Gianna, um, mentioned a very important point, um, a minute ago.
So we're getting, for those who just joined.
Biggest impediments
We're trying to get through zoning, but we're gonna talk about other important news like this, um, this opinion, uh, from the editorial staff that was just published within the last day. Um, I didn't cover this morning, so I'm just trying to, I'm trying to, like, so I'm, I really wish there was something that they, you know, and they use, see, so, so let's just, let's take it back. Let's, let's bring it back. Let's bring it back. So the announcement of, thank you, Honor. Now, it wasn't, I really, sometimes I, I feel bad. Um, feel like you, you always have to, thank you. Help, help Auntie. Oh, come and help Auntie. All right, so like, yeah, so Posting Courier launches Education Lab. This is back in July. Um, and Mitch wrote this before he dipped to work for a hedge fund. Shout out Paul Bowers. So like, um, Posting Courier launches Education Lab to focus on South Carolina public schools, right? Right? And at the table, shout out my girl right here. All right, you got, um, J B H. Um, you, you know, you got, you got usual suspects, what? You got, um, Jennifer, yeah, Jennifer Barry-Halls, Glenn Smith. Uh, you got Ms. Postalway up in there. You got the Charleston Metro Commerce, again, mm-hmm, Tina Worth. I shot, I fuck with Natasha. I fuck with Natasha right here, Akri. Um, and from the military magnet. Um, and then you got, uh, oh, yeah, Ms. Cherie, uh, Sherry Snipes-Williams from Charleston Promise Neighborhood. So that's Zucker. Um, you can, you go, go back and forth with who got Postalway. Um, but usual suspects, right? So, and then what it tells you at the bottom of the announcement, let me just go ahead and hit that fine button. Yeah, right there. Oh, yeah, here it is. Boom, I'm gonna search for it. Um, it says, if you're interested in supporting this work, we are seeking, um, we are seeking funders and partners. Please, just sell a building. Sell your real estate. All right, sell all your, your, your real estate holdings on the peninsula. You have plenty of money. You can start two, two Posting Curriers. All right, all donations to the Education Lab will be funneled through Coastal Community Foundation and are taxable. Transactional philanthropy. Still worries. Philanthrocapitalism matters worse, y'all. Let's check in, let's check in. Ross still talking?
Partner with you on doing an A D U, but in exchange for that money, you
Okay, just check, just check. I, I got, I own two things, y'all. I got you. All right, so all donations will be funneled through Coastal. Y'all think that that don't have like some other implications? You think that they're just a fiscal, a fiscal sponsor of this? The part, partly is the fiscal sponsorship. That is part of it. That is a fiscal sponsorship that process these tax deductible donations. And also, if they're tax deductible, tax deductible, that also implies that this is a charitable type of, um, uh, initiative. Let me read it. Let me revisit this real quick. And if you're here, hey, 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 we got getting, we waiting through, we getting through. Is that K K K Corey? Was that K K K? Oh, 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 oh. That was real dramatic. Oh, so, yo, 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 oh, oh, hold up. This explains. So I'm driving through West Ashley, right, y'all? I just got my teeth cleaned, right? Hold on, I'm gonna flip back to it. Let me rewind it. I was getting my teeth cleaned, ba, 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 I'm coming through West Ashley from my dentist. And, um, I'm coming through West Ashley for, for my dentist, and I see, um, what's his face? Uh, Bear Spray Messenger, Tyler Messenger, who was sold, was supposedly sued into oblivion by, um, by some local folks. Um, and so then, okay, so Bear Spray Messenger, he's in that, um, the hamster mobile, the Kia, the Kia Soul. Um, he's in the hamster mobile in West Ashley with the fuck Biden flag. He's holding it out the window. Not that it's affixed to the, because he probably got caught by the police with that stupid flag, because even Warren Pepper wrote about it in, in the Posting Courier. So I'm driving through West Ashley and he's, he's driving his, um, hamster mobile, the Kia Soul. And I'm like, I bet you he's going to city council. Right? Because it was around four o'clock when I was coming back from the dentist today, right? Right? All right, so I'm switching it back up. I'm gonna switch it back up, right? So look at this, look at this. So, so Ross, they talking, we, we trying to get through the whole, um, rezoning portions, and can y'all make it out? Right there behind Ross is a Proud Boy insurrectionist terrorist. Right here behind, right here behind Ross. And I'm gonna hit, I'm gonna hit play. I rounded a little bit. I'm gonna hit play.
Your affordable housing
Y'all see him?
restrictive covenant requirement will cause us to not have any ADUs built in the city of Charleston, and ultimately it'll be counterproductive.
Yep, that's him.
Get to where we wanna be. Now, if we wanna set aside some money out of our fee and loo fund from all these mixed use workforce housing projects that are going up on the peninsula.
Yeah, it's real pathetic.
Program that says we got a hundred grand every year, first come, first served.
I'm only playing this because I think he gets up.
City of Charleston will partner with you on doing an A D U, but in exchange for that money, you gotta put a deed restriction? I get that entirely.
I'm gonna take a sip.
Guys, we have got to let the free market work when it comes to housing.
Free market conservatives.
Dysfunctional housing market, and it's causing major supply side constraints. Got to get more housing built, so that naturally drives price.
We such a wasteful country. We have adequate housing.
Work in every other
We have the housing.
Whether it be TVs, whether it be cars, maybe not lately with some of these supply chains.
So yeah, there's K K K Corey right there.
Before all that, one other quick anecdote, and I promise I'll, I'll wrap up soon.
Yeah, that's him.
There's no state in the country that has worse
So who he letting in?
Affordable housing problems than the state of California.
Spray Messenger?
Right. If you think little bungalows and burn downs are overpriced, there are millions of dollars
Okay.
in Silicon Valley and some of those other places. Guys, Charleston is heading in that direction. We're not gonna be there, we're not there today, we're not
You will be there. You're not gonna stop it.
On the way to, this problem's only gonna get worse. The state legislature in California passed a series of laws essentially stripping away local governments ability to regulate ADUs, right? In that entire legislative push that happened last year in the state of California, even the state of California doesn't require affordable housing deed restrictions tied to eighty percent of A M I. California, if we pass this as presented, this will be more regulatory burden than the state of California. We need to find a way to get
I paused.
free market working and housing.
I'm gonna mute this because I wanna read your comments. You, um, let me see, let me see, let me see. I'm gonna get back to educate. I know, I know, we gonna get, please, believe me. I just wondered, I just, I saw K K K Corey and I had to just like, I'm like, wait, hold up. Got a whole, um, white nationalists just sitting behind you, Ross. Yeah, that's why y'all watch with me, right? Y'all watch with me because you wanna see that, right, Ally? You can't see because you're driving. Be safe, be safe. We don't want you to become an episode of. Wait, I'm sorry. Be safe, Ally, while you drive. My nut. All right, all right, hold up, okay. So I muted Ross. He's going on about Silicon Valley affordable housing. I, I assure you, there's no policies that Ross has initiated that will actually slow down the gentrification and, and the, and the crazy growth. Oh, look at your boy, Evelyn.
Too much information to make an amendment like that, in my opinion, on the fly and get the full details out of it. The real answer that
I can't, I could do a council meeting. I can't do melatonin meeting. I can do a council meeting. I can't do melatonin. Let's get back to this real quick. So, so CCF is processing payments, acting as a, a guest, uh, essentially a fiscal sponsor for, for, so don't you think it's weird? Don't y'all think like just basic, on a basic fundamental level, going back to this? I know y'all got whiplash, but we, this is what we do. This is what we do. All right, um, I got you, Honor. Thank you, thank you. So don't y'all think it's kind of weird that the actual fiscal sponsor of the Education Lab is actually also part of creating, writing the, the white papers and help crafting the education policy? That they then, that then the editorial staff goes back and cheers. Y'all don't see like, how like, okay, so your fiscal sponsor for your education lab, and I wanna, um, let me see. I don't know, like, I'm not gonna read the name. I'm gonna see what the, oh, what the counter argument was. Um, let me see if I can search for it in my inbox. Oh, yeah. All right, let me see what the, what the counter argument was. Oh, was it my DMs? Was it in my DMs? Might have been. Might have been. Oh, God, the cruise ships are coming back too. Fuck me. I just saw that pop. I'm opening Instagram. Hold up, y'all. Uh, there it is, there it is. Let me see if I got it here. So some of the pushback, let me see. All right, so, um, back, back in August, I posted, I shared, um, Honor, you don't mind me saying it. Honor, you posted something back, and I don't have it available for y'all to see it. Um, but Honor, you posted back, uh, around that time. It says, um, and founder, um, Ben Navarro's involved in a dark money group that spent hundreds of thousands of dollars to elect. Uh, and this is a public post, Honor, that I'm reading from. It's not, you know, so this is something, and I shared this on Instagram. Um, but, uh, you said, uh, founder Ben Navarro's involvement in a dark money group that spent hundreds of thousands of dollars to elect their handpicked slate of board members. Then you put in, like, in July, right, that we just read from, announced the Education Lab and focused on South Carolina education reform. And Honor, you went on, you characterized it this way. You said the new education division with, at the, at the Posting Courier with a dedicated editor and two reporters, a dedicated editors and two reporters. We know J B H is one, right? And we saw that big Gone with the Wind style, style piece that was on the front page of, on the front page of the Sunday Posting Courier. Um, so she's saying, so the Education Lab is, uh, has, has two dedicated reporters and its own editor. Remember, Hannah, Hannah didn't even get an editor for food section, right? Um, I don't believe she did. She didn't get lawyers. Let me say that. She didn't get legal. Um, it's funded by private donations funneled through, um, Coastal Um, it's funded by private donations funneled through, um, Coastal Found, Coastal Community Foundation. Some of the pushback was, um, uh, that they didn't like the word funnel, even though that's, that's what, that's literally what that's, that's like verbatim, like Hon wasn't like putting no hot sauce on it. She, she literally quoted the paper that said funnel through, right? Right? Um, right? Uh-huh. All right, and so they said that, oh, they, um, they just fund CCF to accept the donations. So, so they're saying that only financial interest that CCF, this is the part that really kind of like, like, I love y'all, but if you ain't gonna come correct, don't come at all. So like, the person was like, oh, they're not taking any money. They're just, they're just, um, acting as a fiscal sponsor, right? Um, and saying that that's not a, that's not a controversy if it's not a controversy. Um, uh, and then it says, then they, they also doubted whether or not Navarro was linked to CCF. And I'm like, then you really totally lose me. Like, you totally, like, you don't know the issue. You don't have a grasp if you're gonna come to me with Navarro and CCF don't have a relationship. Let's go back. I'm all, this is whiplash, y'all. We getting ready. For those who just joined me, welcome.
A particular person in my family.
They're still on the same.
About it.
See, I'm telling you, Waring, okay, I'm not gonna float nothing, but y'all, please keep y'all eye on Waring. Because I'm getting concerned. Because he's been talking.
Something had to be done. And I'd like to tell you, it was my sister.
Oh, no, that's Mitchell.
Was going through a problem when her heart and died and
Yeah, I go recklessly speculating. My bad. Let me get myself there. Okay, I've been jumping to conclusions more than lately. But, um, yeah, so we're keeping an eye on this. For those who came in for city council, they're going through zoning. We're waiting for at least a public hearing period and then we're also gonna wait to get all the way down. Y'all can leave and come back. This is, this is what it is. It's gonna be a husky ass meeting. Um, then they're going to, um, get to the special commission and of course, the, the bid, the bid districts, right? So we're gonna catch up on that too, but this op ed is, I gotta get through this. So the, so the, the people who defend CCF was like Navarro, they trying to like question and downplay Navarro's uh, role, Ben Navarro, aggressive tax collector, I mean debt collector. Um, downplay his role as CCF. I'm like, you can't do that. Like, there's no way you can do that. And I guess what I was trying to do is pull up the, um, pull up the image that I just downloaded that, you know, um, shout out. All right, let's pull that up real quick, right? So when, when people kind of question stuff, they, you know, and this is where you doubt, you doubt grassroots organizers because this is where you have to stop thinking that everything a major million dollar nonprofit says and does is wholesome. Like, when you start questioning the grassroots voice more than you question the billions, not the millions, the billions of dollars behind, um, some of these, some of these things, you gotta, you gotta pump the brakes a little bit. And I'm not trying to pile on to this person who'd sent me the defense, but it's just like, you gotta really chill. And so, um, vote, uh, vet your vote illustrates this. Other area education advocates illustrate this or tell us this much, right? So there's a corporate, there's a corporate influence on Charleston County, um, Charleston County schools, period, right? So you want to look at things like you saw, you saw the news, the education lab announcement. You had JBH and then you had like, you had Charleston Promise Neighborhood. You had all the usual suspects that are either Zucker or Navarro related, right? So when you talk about like, right here, right, Clemson diversity study, right? When you hear that, oh, that's Clemson, that's my alma mater. I'm cool with that. Yeah, right? Right? So Josh was on the Clemson University Advisory Committee, hired, hired Clemson, um, chief, um, diversity officer, Lee Gill, right? So there's a connection there. Who is Josh Bell? Josh used to head up College for Kids, but now he's working in another capacity with, um, Ben Navarro, uh, Ben Navar, Ben Navarro, um, nonprofit over here. Um, so when you see rise, when you see cradle to career, coastal, right? Right? Right here. Darren Goss is involved, right? Community listening sessions, like these are mission critical right here, mission critical. Board of Trustees, uh, Board of Trustees issues, mission critical directives and activates community teams to formulate recommendations for consideration, uh, for administration to execute prior to June twenty-four, twenty nineteen. So like, like, it's not really, really that hard. Like, you can find Ben Navarro easily. So, um, yeah. But, um, yeah, just this, this person was very, you know, defensive and I get it. Yeah. Yeah, and, and to their, and to their point, yeah, tons of fun, yeah, fiscal, yeah, coastal is a fiscal sponsor to a lot of other initiatives and other organizations, right? And then this person says that, this person thought that CCF, or they think that CCF is actually advocating for public schools. They're not. They're, they're advocating for, how would you, how would you call it, right? Right? What, what would you call it? Um, is it, is it just, is it just private-public hybrid? Is it just that, Hon? I don't know if you still, like, right? Some people get really defensive. Um, uh, yes, and they're radical education advocacy, and they, and they have a radical, yeah, partnership schools, right? And, and like, it's, 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 you, you can no longer just keep thinking that this is just, um, wholesome ass. You can't, you can't keep thinking, thinking this. Just because schools are involved, just because they're talking about better, better things for our schools, just because they gussy up them kids and bring them out for a photo op. Um, you know, the stand behind McMaster who taking away all their mommies and daddies. Um, you know, things like, uh, SNAP benefits and, and, and unemployment, any unemployment benefits early, you know? You could, you could take all the pictures with the black students you want. That doesn't mean anything. And it's really icky to take a picture when your school, it's really icky for a bunch of powerful white men who've been in power for decades. Who either had their wealth for decades or been in power for decades. It's really gross to have a bunch of kids, a black, a bunch of little black kids in your photo. It looks very mission trip to Africa. Looks very fucked up, white savior. Really, really disgusting. Oh, my God, is the, are the edibles kicking? Let me stop. Oh, my God, let me do this. I ain't got no, I ain't got a little momma tonight. I ain't got a little momma tonight. All right, my momma's celebrating birthdays. Okay. Okay, anyway. Ally, what's going on with you? I just read that. You good? What's, mm? You said Goss has that white paper. Yeah, the white paper on CCF site. Yeah. Anyway. Anyway, okay, let's check in on city council. Did I mute it? Oh, did I pause it?
Heard she have a big house there and she was
I ain't even pause it. Oh, Lord, let me fast forward it. They still on this?
Twenty-three years and I can tell you about King Street.
Let me go back in.
Work at work on the ADU unit, which is small and basically will be seeing the turnover. I mean, I went door knocking for a candidate.
So they started an hour ago.
One the other day.
I'm just gonna mute it. They started an hour ago, just checking in on this. Uh, Joy, what's up? He says, look, Mr. Goss is big mad right now, uh, right about now, right? Oh, okay. What edit, wait, wait, what editorial? I was reading the one that, that looked like it was written by, um, in this one? No, not this one. Joy, did you, did you author one? Because this is the editorial staff. Which one you talking about? Drop a link. Oh, no. Ally, you need, you need anything? What the fuck? Ally, you ain't saying, did you, I didn't know that. No. Oh, yeah, with your, mm-hmm, that's the catch twenty-two. Go to school, get a good degree. Take on the debt, but you'll be able to pay it back. And then shit, if Obama and Michelle paid their shit off in the second term, was it? If Obama, Michelle, Barack and Michelle paid their, their fucking loans off. Hmm. Let us know for real, like, real, hit, hit me up. If like you code red, I don't have, this is, like, I ain't got much, but you know, we making shake now. That's fucked up. Hmm. Sorry about that. Yeah. All right. Let's see where we at, Carol.
Those properties are just exponentially flying off the charts in value and cost and taxes. So we want to help people in that category of life and commitment to a community be able to stay here. And that's why ultimately I would support Councilmember Appel's amendment. I'm sorry, I won't be here to vote on that in the future. I do think you've got some good ideas about subsidizing. I do think that maybe if, if it's not breaking the fair housing laws, that we could figure out how, how to, how to give people, um, who've been here a certain length of time and want to build an ADU, uh, that the opportunity to not make it restricted. And maybe, you know, the same way we thought about the short-term rental, um, market, that we don't want people like buying up houses just to build high-market ADUs. So a new owner might not be able to
Trying to find the ADU.
Unit, his, her unit, um, offered for sale or rent at the, at, at a non-affordable price. I'm sure we can figure that out in some legal way that would celebrate the people who are here. Give them revenue streams and not allow the camel's nose under the tent.
Okay.
Make this another money-making venture.
I got you.
Moving on to the peninsula. Thank you very much.
I know, I know.
We've got three more council members, but if I may just interject a word from our, uh, commercial message. No, Ms. Johnson wanted to respond to a couple of comments.
Yes, sir. Thank you all. And just for your information, when we looked at ADUs across the country, I will just say to us, they come out of the gate very slow. I would also remind you that several months ago, when we presented this idea, we approved or said we would incentivize the first ten or so residents that came forward with a completed application, um, with twenty thousand dollars, uh, that we would issue at CO once the ADU was built. And so you all supported that. We also went after a grant from AARP that would support this. We were not successful in securing that. But we are looking at other opportunities by which we can help to incentivize because we feel like it's very important. We are asking persons who are, who are not your traditional developers to build. And so we have even had an RFP to
Yeah, we needed Carol. We needed Carol to stay. We needed Stephen to come on.
Plans available for folks. So our goal is to build and bring forth a full package for these individuals.
Like, I'm, I'm still hot off that. Like, I really wish I would have known that that race was like, even had the possibility of, of being tight. Like, I really wish I'd known that. Um, but I did not. I did not.
Councilmember C.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll, I'll be brief. I've been around here long enough to know and I sense there's probably some stomach for to crawl here. And I think that's the right thing to do. Um, I, I gotta tell you, I mean, Councilmember Appel and his comments is right. Um, if the government wants to partner with the private sector to incentivize affordable housing, with all due respect, this ordinance will not do that. I mean, you heard Michelle Johnson just say ADUs have been slow out of the block. Well, think about it. And everyone's focused their comments on the peninsula. You go to someone and say, okay, great, we've just changed our zoning code. You can now build an ADU. It's got to be affordable, as we define it, attainable, affordable, for thirty years. But when you go to build it, the contractor, the suppliers, the materials and everything else you go to build are at a hundred and twenty or fifty percent of what they would be today. So building it is ridiculously expensive. You can't do it. You're gonna have to then go out there and pay taxes at a higher rate.
I really can't.
If you want to go and depreciate it. So the, the incentive just isn't there. I mean, the idea of partnering with the private sector to allow for additional square footage on and off the peninsula with smaller and therefore naturally per square foot more affordable housing is a good idea.
All right, uh, oh, stop. You can stop.
But it's only here half-baked. It needs a lot more. There needs to be true incentive. We heard something about the first, however many people.
Ten people. Ten people, Mike. Pay attention. First ten people. Twenty K. All right, um, so let's, 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 um, wrap up the education piece. I know I'm going back and forth, y'all, but gotta, you know, multitasking, right? All right, so education lab, ba, ba, ba. So that was the announcement. And so I just, I just don't know why people aren't pushing back. Let me see, Joy. Joy, you said you had, um, you got, I got all the thoughts. You got, oh, you got all the thoughts on it. I'm sorry, I thought you wrote editorial. I misread that, read it so fast. Okay, I'm sorry. Joy's like, girl, get it together. All right, um, but yeah, so this editorial, we, we were reading this earlier, where they're excited, they're championing, um, Dwayne Goss's leadership because, you know, he's a huge edu, education um, leader in the country. That's why, you know, really, you know, his, his bona fides speak to it. His credentials speak to him. Psych, we're forming our education. Um, but, you know, you got dollars. If you can raise money, and that's the other thing about Darren, Darren can raise some fucking money. Darren can raise some fucking money. That's why him and my boss got along, I guess they got along a lot, got along well. He can raise some fucking money, but he can't solve poverty. It's really weird. It's really weird. People could do that magic trick, right? Or like, uh, like, uh, Dr. Millicent, like Dr. Millicent, um, Brown said this morning. Did I download it? I didn't download. Like, Dr. Millicent Brown said this morning. Y'all see all my can for business? All my can for business. Yep. Yep, yep, yep. Just like I said this, this morning. That what did my Dr. Millicent say to the Postal Courier? It's unbelievable to me always. It's unbelievable to me always, and always has been, that folks fortunate enough to find themselves in positions of decision-making refuse to acknowledge need to engage, uh, outside voices. And by that, I mean, like, the people outside of the whole establishment, outside of the whole, like, you know, the, the usual suspects. It's crazy. Like your mom, like moms, regular deggle moms and, and parents and whatnot, for real. God, C. K.
You know about to see if they're working or not. So, um, I'm gonna vote to defer it. Uh, I'll, I'll not vote for it if it comes back in, in this form. It needs to be a better form and we all need to work together to do it. I applaud the effort. I applaud their comments. Um, but now let's go to work and let's not do things on the fly.
Let's see where they at.
So with that.
Councilmember Gregory.
I'm still like trying to find where they at, y'all. Y'all know I'm horrible with getting through dense.
Had a lengthy discussion on this issue. Um, and I think we both agree that it would be great if the free market could produce what we want. My concern is that it's a slippery slope.
He always says that.
First we start with ADU, then what's next? And at the same time, the production of affordable units continued to decline. I would agree with you that ADUs are smaller and in most cases more affordable.
Look at ADUs.
But if you look around, you'll see that all these developers are building smaller units. All these apartment buildings that are going up, these units are much smaller.
Okay.
Because the population coming in, okay, are used to those size units. So, 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 so my, my concern is, and when we get to really get this thing cleaned up, is I don't want to, one, set a precedent.
I don't know what an ADU is.
Two.
So let's read it together. What is an ADU? So according to this recently, just, oh, my God, are you fucking serious? Please let me be able to X out this shit. I don't want to, there we go. All right, stop playing. All right, what's an ADU? Okay, uh, what is an ADU? Accessory dwelling units, explain. Um, did y'all already know what that was? What is he saying? Right? I don't know. I, I should let it rock, but let me just read this real quick. Um, accessory dwelling unit usually just called an ADU is a secondary housing unit. Oh! Ooh, I wish Hillary was on this. Um, it's usually, is a secondary housing unit uh, in a single-family residential lot. Okay. Ah! Secondary housing unit on a single-family residential lot. The term accessory dwelling unit is, uh, an institutional sounding name, but it's most commonly used, uh, commonly used term across the country to describe this type of housing. Um, it's a, it's a mouthful, right? ADU is better. So, um, the fact that it's a secretary, secondary housing unit rather than giving structural form, which also defines an ADU, rather than, than a given structural form. Ah! So this is impacting what the short-term rental people? Right? The Airbnb folk? Types of ADUs. Okay, here we go. Types of ADU. Here are some images. Um, detached, so there's detached, new construction, like, yeah, tiny homes. Yeah. Granny flats. I never heard that. I heard like in-law suite, not granny flats. That sounds cute. Okay, so attached and garage conversion. Ah, these are two kinds. Okay. Oh, yeah. Huh.
Word, affordable housing was a full letter dirty word. I mean, it was, and the, the fights on placing affordable housing
So I'mma mute, I'mma mute Shaheed and just read what's on the screen. So, uh, they're, I guess they're voting So, they're, I guess they're voting on the ADU must, well, Seakin's voted to defer. The ADU may include no more than 850 square foot of conditioned floor area provided, however, for ADUs within accessory building approved, utilizing the setback exceptions, yada, yada. Okay. Jesus. I know this is gonna shake up short-term rentals. Okay, now I know why it's highly contested.
And when on the table, how many of you live in the county of Charleston? I mean, live in the city of Charleston? And in most instances, it would maybe in one or two, and it was, as you said, Councilman wearing a legacy. It was his grandmama's house. This is probably the number-one problem facing our city because of housing that includes diverse population makes up the core of a community. And if we look just like one sector of our culture, of our community, we become a one-dimensional community, and we lose the richness of our community in doing that.
I see Tyler Bear spray behind him.
Affordable housing needs every possible tool that we can think of to make it so that people who need housing and attain housing. And that includes.
On a serious note, if my peeps are watching who are in community with Amber, I meant to mute, not pause. Please make sure she's safe. I'm about to text somebody because Tyler and Cory specifically have targeted Amber, and I see Amber behind Tyler Bear Spray Besseger, and Tyler's probably sitting next to Cory. We've already seen Cory behind when Ross was speaking. So, I'm gonna text somebody who I know has, I don't have, um, hold on, I'm texting right Because they've targeted her with videos, and you know, they can't control, they can't control their people. Instead of maybe not mute it while.
You, in my experience in being out in Los Angeles, California is a disaster. Whatever they're doing out there, we don't need to model ourselves after because it is an absolute disaster. They are street people under every nook and cranny, every intersection, every underpass, overpass, ditch, anything that you can find, there's a homeless community located out there. It's everywhere. It is a plague in Los Angeles. It's awful. So, we're, we are, the discussion here is wonderful, but we're happy. As we are addressing attainable housing, we need to look at it from a top-to-bottom issue because it's not just a place to live. It's transportation needs, being able to get from point A to point B. We're having this discussion over in my district on a better north bridge, and there's a lot of opposition to trying to improve so people can have access over the Ashley River and North Bridge. But you've got to have adequate transportation to get to a job, to get to a doctor, to get to a grocery store. And so, when you talk about attainable housing, you've got to include those components.
I'm just texting a couple of people, y'all.
So, that you are able to get from point A to the point B. Not only the house that you're living in.
You don't like his tone.
Have access to a grocery store, have access to public transportation, have access to a doctor, have access, be nice to have access to a park as well. So, we just can't create these islands of houses popping up around our community and not taking consideration all those other components. That all needs to be wrapped into this. And I know that this ordinance isn't, is sort of an appendage to what we're addressing here, but now that we're having this discussion, I thought it'd be a good time to make sure that we put all this on the table. And listen for this, this is a good discussion to have with all of us. This is for it. Come back, let's tweak what we need to tweak. The points we're being made are all very valuable points, and something we need to chew on. But I think we need to look at this from a top-down problem, not just an isolated issue. Thank you.
All right. Councilmember Seakin, you ready to call the question?
Just very briefly, I have one more comment.
Yes, sir.
I forgot. And I'm assuming that when this gets deferred, it'll go back to Councilmember Mitchell's Community Development Committee. And one of the things I forgot is, whatever we come up with, whatever we come up with on this or any other like ordinance, if it's transactionally based between government and the private sector, the transaction has to be at the front end of the deal, not at the back end of the deal. Because, like this ordinance, for instance, there's all sorts of restrictions in there that are effectively, from our perspective as a government, unenforceable.
I just got a text from, inside City Council. So, he's wearing a Hawaiian shirt.
No sublease.
Yeah.
Only two people, all these things. So, whatever the incentive is.
I think Cory's the one wearing the Boogaloo Boys. Now they Boogaloo Boys. They was Proud Boys, now they Boogaloo Boys.
If you do this, you get paid on the front end. There's some incentives on the tax side, but to make it a 30-year policing opportunity for the city will not ever work. Period. It won't work. So, I would respectfully request.
I'm just letting people know what was going on today in Charleston, like, all of that. So, what's up, Perception change? Welcome back.
ADUs.
So, like, yeah, public transportation systems, yeah, not even having access. Jumping organization, probably a lot of attrition, depending on indictments from the government, L. Kuj. All right. I'm just texting people, texting people, like, just say, hey, yeah, they were riding around Roy Stachly with that damn, you know, with that damn flag. So, like, that's just terrorism. Like, when y'all see something, y'all gotta, y'all gotta say something. Yeah, I mean, like, when y'all see, like, some of that stuff, feeling like, oh, there goes Tyler again, but you kind of have to, like, communicate it. Like, don't take it for granted, like I almost did, because you never know where they might pop up, and I knew he was heading down. Damn, they on five? Shit, you got five more to go, y'all. Damn. Oh, God. All right.
Our Neighborhood Edge designation in our city plan. It is a existing office building. Here's an image of it from Savannah Highway. Planning Commission did recommend approval of this, seven to zero.
Thank you. Would anybody like to be heard on this matter?
When you see something, when you see something like Tyler ride through West Ashley with the flag out the window, say something somewhere to somebody. If I was, if I was in the position to film it, I would have, and I wasn't about to bust no U-turn, no damn near, even though it's the holidays, the traffic was still rush hour for Charleston, you know what that is. But make sure you say something because that's, like, just the mentioning of it will be helpful to, so people can't say, oh, I don't know how that happened. We know how that happened because these people are riding around town, and, you know, I get pulled over for, you know, a cop riding my ass for three miles, and I speed up to, like, why are you riding my ass? I get pulled over for that. But that dude's riding around with that flag all the time, and I don't understand how that's not, like, interfering with safety. I don't know, like, you, holding a flag out the window has to be ticket, like, you must get a ticket for that, right? Yeah. Perception change, what you saying? Let me see what you saying right here. You said also Mika at Hotel Bella Grace in the lobby, there are artifacts. Artif, yeah. I, that Hotel Bella Grace is such a bullshit-ass hotel. Artifacts in quotation, non-display room when the restored building, uh-huh, slave tag, they are slave tags?
On fact.
Oh, not in the lobby? But they have it in there? That's gross. That's gross.
Discussion. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Pose the ayes, have it. Mr. Morgan.
The next one is on James Island.
I, I'm not doing calls right now. Perception change, I hear you, though.
Seven acre, recent annexation, it was R4.
Yeah. That's trash.
You see the property here, it's surrounded by R4 in the county.
Thank you, though.
Across the street is SR1 in the city. It is in our city plan as suburban, and so the SR1 works for that.
Oh, they on seven?
Here's an image of the property.
They already on seven?
And Planning Commission recommended seven to zero for approval of SR1.
Would anyone like to be heard on this matter? Any discussion?
Give me some carbs.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Yeah, Ally, that is, like, you driving with that?
Okay. This is a track, several tracks on Maybank Highway on John's Island.
They tearing up my home little area.
It's just west of Sailfish Drive, which is here. Our new city fire station will be over here at Wilts Battery, right here. It is to the east of the Live Oak Village that's in this location here.
They putting a fire thing in?
It is, this will be a request as far as coming into the city for DR-12. It was zoned limited commercial.
It wasn't until, like, a few years ago that I realized.
In Charleston County.
How much Charleston runs into John's Island?
The property show in our city plan, it is in our Neighborhood Edge.
Like, during the pandemic, I looked for green spaces to go out in, and like, so I would go and park at the park, and they, remember when they closed all the parks during the pandemic? Remember when they wouldn't even let you park, like, wouldn't let you get out there? So, the police were there, it's like, yo, the park is closed, you can't, you can't be in here, because they didn't want people to congregate outside before they realized that being outside wasn't as bad as being inside. And that's when I, when I kept seeing Charleston PD at the John's Island Park, I'm like, ain't this John, ain't this the county? Why aren't the Sheriff's Department here? And I'm like, damn, Charleston just is weird. Charleston is just, yeah, BL, what happened? Mm-hmm. Oh, you know that. Ally, to your point, mm-hmm. Sorry for smacking on the mic. I ain't into that ASMR shit.
And meet all our stormwater standards and all our traffic.
I think I am.
And all other city codes. But the Planning Commission did recommend approval, six to zero, for the DR-12 on this site.
Would anyone like to be heard on this matter?
Back in motion to approve.
Mayor, I believe there is a citizen who is coming up from downstairs. Is that correct?
Would anyone, yes, sir. Please come forward.
Evening. My name is Tony Berry. I'm the developer of the project, and just wanted to answer any questions. There will be a workforce component to this that we've committed to and are actually working with Ms. Johnson in the city of Charleston to bring some affordable workforce countenance to this project.
Thank you, sir.
And, Mr. Mayor, we did receive one comment online, or, I'm sorry, we received a letter from the John's Island Council that expressed opposition for the zoning. They said the area would be better developed as commercial than high-density residential with consideration of current massive traffic problems due to rampant residential development along Maybank Highway, and it was signed by 11 members. And those were all the comments that we received.
So, they opposed it. People from John's Island opposed it.
And a second discussion of questions. All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Pose the ayes, have it. Number, yes.
I'm taking a sip. Another one.
Need to hold the vote for that item because of the annexations. Yes.
For number eight?
For number eight. That's correct.
Well, that's the one we were just on.
Yeah, but you got to do third meeting.
We'll go on to number nine.
This is Fort Lamar Road on James Island. This is an annexation of parcels.
All right. Hold on, hold on. Let's get, now, let me stop pausing it. Mika, stop.
Four in Charleston County.
He just doesn't move. All right. So, I'm gonna go, now I'm gonna spend time, we're gonna get, because they're at nine right now, and then let's get back to the agenda so we know where we're at in the agenda. Hey, hey, hey. For those watching, for those who just came, yep, we just kind of eating up the clock. The zoning issues are serious, as we overheard, as we listened in, but we just, I can't do it. I just, I can't. Yeah, the zoning, zoning is where it's at, but we're waiting to get through the 10 zoning issues and then act on public hearing matters, and then the approval of a city council minutes, and then the citizens' participation period, because we want to, we want to be clued in on that, we want to hear and listen to that. So, they're on E9, so, two away, we'll see how long, how lengthy, okay, they just, they're zooming through. So, I wanted to revisit, shout out to Sicee Shop for pulling up this piece, you know, whose city, fueling the gentrification machine, right? So, bids, that's what's up for discussion today. At City Council, they buried it very deep. I'll hang on as long as I can till they get to that period. That's gonna be important. I also think that public comment period, though, we're gonna see probably Proud Boys insurrectionists out there who are animated. Anytime the special commission comes out, the Koch brothers and whomever starts throwing money at the, at these groups to get them animated, activated, get a little gas money, a couple dollars for some chicken nuggets, you know, for McDonald's, whatever they do. To me, I'm sure they can, I'm sure Klondike and a Diet Mountain Dew will get them motherfuckers up. I don't think they need much to be real, right? So, this piece was written last September, last year, September of 2020, about bids. We talked about this a little bit this morning. I probably didn't do it justice because we're trying to do a lot of things and get through a lot of things, but I wanted to go back and just, you know, explain what they are. What is a bid, right? What is a BID, right? Says, technically, BIDs or bids represent a variation of special district governance. Bids make it possible for city governments to devolve, to devolve the power to manage local assessments or taxes to a sub-municipal organization, which holds decision-making power over how these funds are spent. Usually, so, what we know that to be in Charleston, that's gonna be comprised of these very moneyed, very affluent millionaire, billionaire developers, property owners, et cetera, et cetera, right? Okay, they still doing it? Still on that? Okay, cool, cool, cool. Keep an eye on it, right? Right? So, we know what that, what that sub-municipal body already exists, that sub-municipal body is already animated and doing its thing. Let me pull it back. Let me see. Charleston. Business. Oh, here we go. Let me see, they, I'm gonna go back to see, they linked the, they linked the, because we watched the December 7th convening before. Now, they don't have any links to it? I wanted to get a link to their, the Charleston Business Alliance. Let me see if I can just Google that. Charleston Business Alliance. Okay. Is that it? Was it, was it a business alliance or news? Yeah. I mean, yeah, we could, we could go back to this. Go back to the WC CBD piece. Let's check on it, let's check on it. Okay, they on 10, they on 10. Oh, my man is up on the mic. My man is up.
...ago. And I'm submitting this from the IRS in protest of their public safety there. We want to ensure that people are not racially profiled in Berkeley County, and also the info development will probably lead to some redistricting issues and probably dilute the vote and take some political power from black people. But I want to make sure that you get this information to whoever, BCD cop, which you the treasurer, Caldwell Pinckney, the letter here from the...
I'm gonna mute it. Let's go.
...the clock.
The clock. Some downtown Charleston business owners say they feel left out of plans to improve King Street. It's a story we've been covering for months. Nistus Katie Augustine tells us why the shop owners say some changes need to be made and they need to be a part of the decision.
Some businesses feeling excluded by plans to improve the King Street experience.
Worth having a discussion about extending that up to our neck of the woods.
There's a lot of support flowing in for the Business Improvement District.
We could not be more proud to support this.
And it makes.
So they didn't say that, y'all, but that was representative from, is it BMOC? I always pronounce it funky. From BMOC? And that was, BMOC is of course owned, they just bought the Charleston Police Hotel. That's Ben Navarro, right? So they didn't put that in the Chyron or nothing like that.
Makes sense why.
We see this project that we're a part of as additional support.
It would run from Broad Street all the way up King to Line Street. But business owners on Upper Kings say it should be extended to Romney Street.
But the ticking point.
We heard, we watched this.
Is from Line Street up to Romany Street is being left out.
You know, in five years, that is going to be the heart of downtown. It's moving up.
This is the cutoff for the proposed district. You can see some businesses behind me just missed the cutoff. I took these concerns to project leaders who say there's always a possibility for expansion.
Part of the conversation all along has been this, what we are proposing from Line to Broad Street is not the be all end all.
Yeah, Mikey, you got it.
It's the starting point.
The plan is to wait and see if the idea runs smoothly before tackling more.
I think the CDA is certainly open to having those conversations. The bid effort is not put in place to exclude anyone. We want a vibrant, diverse center of commerce in our community.
In downtown Charleston, I'm Katie Augustine.
Count on two. Okay, so that's just a quick synopsis of what's being proposed tonight. Let's see what this is.
Foundations that had been made by either the special commission that's already been closed out or any future work of this commission if it be formed. So just like we've set up in the past.
Okay, hold on, hold on. Let's wind it, let's wind it.
I did note that a number of people are here to make comments about an item that's later on our agenda regarding the Human Affairs and Racial Conciliation Commission. Do want to point out to everyone that there's no vote being taken tonight on any policy matters or any recommendations that have been made by either the special commission that's already been closed out or any future work of this commission if it be formed. So just like we've set up in the past, a commission on women or commission on disabilities. We're just setting up a commission tonight. We're not taking any policy stands or approving any policies related to this issue. I just want to share that with you. So Madam Clerk, will you please ask folks to come up one at a time? And please give us your name and address and we look forward to hearing from you. Thank you.
Councilmember Let Parker.
Oh shit. Oh.
Oh, welcome. Our new, as of next meeting.
Oh Lord, it's starting all spicy, y'all. Right, Ally, I saw you. Oh Lord, goodness.
Our new council member elect from Jane Dolan, Caroline Parker. Thank you for being with us. All right, didn't see you.
You hear that's Corey and them clapping extra hard.
Yes, I am Councilwoman-elect Caroline Parker for District 12. I'll be sitting here in January. I just want to be clear that not all the items in this report are bad. I've met with multiple city departments already who've already been or have begun implementing processes.
She's not even talking about anything specific. Okay. Sorry.
Will help continue to create a fair and diverse environment. But let me also be clear that the job that we are elected for as council members and mayor
She's speaking against her first meeting.
For government services to the taxpaying citizens of the city of Charleston. We have a backlog of items that the city has yet to complete as far as clearing drainage systems, help prevent future flooding.
Just airing grievances, no plans.
My constituents made their voices heard on November 2nd. They voted no to this commission and no to this report. They chose common sense for Charleston over national political agendas.
Carol, I'm mad at you.
The fact that this commission report is being reintroduced at the end of
Time.
The year, right before turnover. I just hope y'all take that into consideration tonight.
Fuck. Okay, it's cut. Good. Bye. Who was clapping? Who was applauding? She didn't even say nothing. Oh shit. Oh my God.
If anybody would like to ask the other.
Oh my God. That's Lindsey, is that Lindsey Loomis? Is that?
Other people here tonight assembled, if they want to agree with your point of view, you can ask them to raise their hands. But we don't allow any outburst during the public participation period. And if you insist on doing that, we're going to ask you to leave.
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes, kick them out.
Yes, hi, my name is Lindsey Piper Loomis. I'm the only America First candidate for South Carolina District One from US Congress. I'm here tonight because the Equity Inclusion Act is a threat to our republic and it is criminal. My cousin, Thomas Jefferson penned one of the greatest documents of all time, the Declaration of Independence. We are not defined by our skin color, what our circumstances were in the past, what they are now, what they'll be in the future. We are all created equal. Our rights have been, our unable rights have been endowed as public creator. So we need to start speaking to one another in that capacity and bringing forth substance.
Black people, we know how. My cousin, Thomas Jefferson knows how to treat black people.
You as a solution, you as a solution, each one of us as a solution instead of determining that we are poor just based on our, our skin color or based on our circumstances. Because if that was the case, I wouldn't be here. I would be on, off the streets doing.
Yeah, cut it.
Leah Williams.
OMG. I'll be right back.
I'm Leah Williams from Charleston. And I just want to speak against this commission. I don't think that's what your job is. We, the people, get to decide what our relationships are with each other. And you have the job of just making sure that there's a level playing field where everybody gets their chance to do as they want and not be discriminated against.
I want y'all to see the many generations of racism. It don't die off.
Piss against each other. We are all created equal. We need to treat each other that way. And this, in the early prayer that you had on the other meeting, we talked about learning to get along. The only way we're going to learn to get along is if we on the street talk to each other, not by a commission telling us how we have to behave and how we have to treat each other.
She saw racism.
Mara Brothbain.
Sit your ass down. I don't care who grandmama you with. I don't care who's me, Mara, you is. Oh.
CRT is not a positive educational program. It indoctrinates manable minds.
I believe this is the woman that, I think this is the woman. Let me rewind her real quick. I think Maurice Washington teamed up with her. I might be completely off. Let me see. So she's coming up to talk about CRT, but they not even discussing CRT, like that's not taught in schools, but. Wait, I gotta get her name. Hold on, y'all. I gotta, I gotta get her name so I can hear it. Thanks YouTube. You've been awesome today.
We need to treat each other that way. And this, in the early prayer that you had on the other meeting, we talked about learning to get along.
Ally, she do say hello.
On the street, talk to each other, not by a commission telling us how we have to behave and how we have to treat each other.
Is that Mara, is that her, is that?
Mara Brothbain.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Yep, yep, it is Joy. Wasn't that the one that pinned that op ed with Maurice?
CRT is not a positive educational program. It indoctrinates manable minds with opinions that are not necessarily founded on truth and are potentially harmful and hateful. Children, in many cases, adults need to learn and assimilate solid facts. They need to learn analytical thinking and critical, critical discernment, which will endure them with the ability to take opinions and discern for themselves what is true, right and profound. CRT is based on emotions and feelings. It dumps down education. What is needed are skills based on Socratic teaching, which is thoughtful dialogue and debate. CRT will create an undereducated class without skills for a competitive workforce. Ours may become the first civilization destroyed, not by the power of our ownness, but by the ignorance of our teachers and the dangerous nonsense they are teaching to our children in an age of artificial intelligence.
She brought the ponytail guy. Oh, you there? Are you in there?
Anne Bo Shan.
Are you in there?
Anne Beecham from Charleston. I would like to ask that this be passed out when I finish. Do you like being lied to? Well, I would like to tell you that you have been lied to.
Ham and mayonnaise.
What I have in my hand is an indictment where the, the, that's going to be delivered to the attorneys general all over the country. The defendants are Anthony Fauci. The FDA, the CDC, Dr. Ralph. Belinda, can't read.
Ruining points, that is for me. That's not festive.
They are charged with domestic terrorism. Charged with funding and creating a bioweapon, which is commonly called.
Somebody gave her a chain email. Remember chain emails, y'all? Oh my God.
COVID vaccine.
Ham and mayonnaise sandwich.
They're being charged with criminal commercial activity. Every single thing that you've had.
Mohammed Idris.
You've been lied to. I'm the only one with these secret records, these scrolls from Q. You've been lied.
Evening.
Oh boy.
You say we don't have affordable housing. But when you take and tell someone the land is contaminated and you move the people out of that. Then you build a museum for the people on contaminated land. That's the act of devils. That's not the act of good citizen. You tell the people they have to move.
My dad.
Then you come back and put them
My dad.
On contaminated land and say, here you are.
I wish I was, no, I don't. Omicron.
Anthony Bryan.
Bars, right? That was.
Yeah, listen.
That was more that. Mm hmm. Ringo, tell that, sir.
You to read Note, State of Virginia by Thomas Jefferson. Deepwater prejudice entertained by whites. Ten thousand recollections by blacks are injured sustained. New provocation, distinction nature is made. And many other circumstances will divide and apart from two scumbos that will never end, so even one or the other race. Jefferson wrote that in 1781.
I can't hear.
Led the rules, the Red Fellow's Papers 64, first was 10. Remember that, you in city of Charleston, not someplace else. What I'm going to say to the human, the homeland security is a public hearing on Title 15, criminal street gangs, showing that people are not, are not coordination and information collection and not placed on young people in our community.
Your device.
State and local law enforcement, our police practices, excessive force and a cause of action. We want a public hearing with Homeland Security in our neighborhood.
This dude, he got it for every.
Sharon Irwin.
Opportunity.
Irvin, I'm sorry. Irwin.
Yeah, sovereign citizen. I think so. Yeah, he's sovereign. I, I didn't want to say it earlier, but.
I'm against your equity and inclusion panel. This is actually critical race theory and it has its roots in the prophet Karl Marx. This is all about destroying our country from within. When Marxism takes over, you got to destroy the history. You take statues down. You allow riots to destroy your cities and you've got to get races hating each other. And I don't know why anybody, any elected official would want their grandchildren to be hated because of their skin color or why anybody would want their grandchild to hate somebody else's because of their skin color.
From the white tears.
This does. We are all children of God and our skin color doesn't matter.
It doesn't.
You've got to stop this equity and inclusion thing and stop talking about race. Your job is to keep the roads in good condition, keep the drains cleaned out and welcome new businesses. All I hear, hear tonight is fascist.
Mark Knapp.
Damn, it must be hard.
Mark Knapp.
Why is Carl, I know Carl is not, okay, because he's not in person. But I don't know if they need to put him as a, as a, what you call it, a pinned screen, like they can just even minimize him.
I'm back.
Oh shit, my ears.
That's the bad, bad news. Good news is I'm back.
I got changed.
Now, year and a half and you guys have done a hell of a job destroying this city. Okay?
Okay.
I mean, it's ridiculous, the stuff I'm seeing happen.
What?
I even hate to work downtown anymore. It's gotten out of control.
What specifically, sir?
You guys pass the budget, $20 million shortfall, you give yourself a raise and then you raise everybody's taxes. Talk about irresponsibility. I'm looking at it. You guys, a lot of you, from what I'm seeing with all this inclusion stuff, you're a Dylann Roof fan club.
What?
And that's sad. Because hopefully he's going away soon.
I would have, that was, oh, that was hate speech. That was hate speech.
Doug Warner, 45 Pendleton Street. I'm here to talk in favor again of the bid that will be on the agenda later. There's been some discussion about kind of the lack of connectedness to business owners. I want you to know that we personally reached out, sent a white paper with all the details of the bid to every registered owner of property on King between Line and Broad. We've got over 62% of verbal commitments from those property owners.
Keep talking about these percentages.
Have signed a statement of support.
Stop saying percentages.
Asking you to add a fee on top of their taxes so that they can improve the experience on King Street.
50% of two is, is one.
We've also reached out to business operators who don't own property and have over 50 of them also who have signed a statement of support. What we're asking you to do. Thank.
Brett Barry.
Oh shit.
Hi, good evening. Brett Barry, West Ashley. This body rejected the report of the Commission on Racial Conciliation in August and ended the commission in September.
I really could.
Now, three days before Christmas, council is consider, considering resurrecting the commission. This commission quoted in their report, Alicia Garza, a self avowed Marxist and supporter of cop killer Joanne Chesimard. The premise of the commission is that everyone from our police to the citizens of Charleston are inherently and structurally racist. The ordinance cannot be modified to correct this hateful error. Fix flooding and stop this foolishness. As a recently new father, again, I have two little girls now. I want everybody to have opportunity. I want everybody to have safety and security in this world. This commission is not pushing it forward. It's driving division. We can do better than this. Thank you.
And that's how, that's how they use that. Then everyone says, oh, he's real rational. He's, no, no.
Good evening. I'm Dr. Bobby Baker. I know many of you here tonight. I'm here also to talk about the commission. I realize it's not being voted on this evening.
No, you don't.
But I asked the council to stick to your conviction and maintain the, the vote that you had before on eliminating this commission. Because I agree with a lot of the things that have been said already tonight. And that is that we are attempting to try to divide this wonderful city. Charleston's been voted again and again and again as friendly city in the, in the war, in the United States.
I'm gonna cut your mic and give you, oh, my bad. Let me give it to you again. They didn't win that stu, like, come on, stop.
Time.
Time. Perfect time for me.
Dr. Cogan.
I'm sure y'all wanted to hear that, but. And you hear, when that dude brought up Dylann Roof, now they're weaponizing Dylann Roof against black people. You see that, right? See, when you don't take hold of that.
Mayor members of the city council.
Here we go.
My name is Michael Cogan. I live at one King Street. The Commission on Equity Inclusivism and Racial Conciliation is not about inclusivism and fairness. It is a commission on vengeance and racial division. It sees every issue through the narrow lens of race and alleged racism. As part of city government, it would divide Charlestonians between the oppressed and the oppressors, fixated on a dead past rather than the urgent living present and future that this city must fix on, must be concerned with. You have already voted to disband this extremist body and reject this report. Why is this issue still alive?
Mary Ann Robison. Mary Ann Robison.
A lot of words is original in this damn public comment. Sorry, MB, that's ages, but I'm.
Mary Ann Robison, 2,400 bending oak in Mount Pleasant.
A lot of words is originals.
Psalm 127.
Oh my goodness gracious.
Except the Lord build the house. They labor in vain that build it. Except the Lord keep the city, the watchman waketh, but in vain may we serve the Lord himself.
And I believe this is Andy Porch. I'm sorry if I mispronounced that. Andy Porch.
Close enough. I know you meant, my name is Andy Pouch. I'm from Mount Pleasant, South Carolina. Speaking on equity inclusion. First of all, I'd like to thank all of our public servants. I've been to a few of these meetings and I know you guys don't do it for the glory or the pay. You do it because you're servant leaders and you have a heart for service.
They're not servant leaders.
In 2017, after the Mother Emanuel tragedy, this city showed the country what it meant to respond in a way that was gracefully.
I'm gonna pause it. I really do want to let it go because it's live stream. I told y'all, not y'all, you, literal, but I told people, if you don't, if you don't ask, you don't, excuse me, demand, demand what you need, Mother Emanuel happened, fuck all that handholding. I told you they would seize it and now they've referenced Dylann Roof. And now they're referencing Mother Emanuel again for the umpteenth time. This is what happens when you don't take hold of the narrative and you don't own that shit. You don't bank political power. This is what happens when you like Mark Pepper, a fucking ambulance chaser, take on a historic civil rights case. What could have been a historic civil rights case here in Charleston. This is what, what happens when you see power because somebody treats you well in the form of a fucking job or opportunities to work at a nonprofit. This is what happens when you fumble that motherfucking political power bag. And we fumbled it in at least the two, two magnificent huge times since I've been here. Three of you want to count Walter Scott. Walter Scott, Mother Emanuel and the George Floyd protests. Not, and I'm not even blaming like the, like nobody, just like this is what happens when you don't, now they're actually, white people have the fucking temerity to get up to a mic and say that anyone fighting for equity is a Dylann Roof fanatic, I would have punched him in his goddamn face. I, I would have, I would have, let me be real. I would have gotten removed from chambers after you say that. You not saying that in my motherfucking black face. And I'd say, and now they bastardize and what happened there are change. This is offensive. And I'm not, I'm not being hyperbolic. This is a, you would never fucking play fast and loose. This is the time we live in. You got members of Congress talking about yellow stars and, and doing the same thing with the Holocaust. This is the shit. Now, all these horrific things that have happened now are fucking being used and bandied about to score political points. If you don't know what equity inclusion is or you don't like it and you have racial animus, just say that. Don't bring up Mother Emanuel, MLK and all this other shit. Holding hands across the bridge did not do anything. It didn't close no loophole. It didn't do shit. Period. Stop it.
After the George Floyd tragedy, we did the opposite. This Commission on Racial and Equity Inclusion was a knee jerk. This Commission on Racial and Equity Inclusion was a knee-jerk reaction.
No, it wasn't.
To satisfy the mob. It's not doing anybody any good.
You had the literal Proud Boys here.
Nothing but divide this community. There shouldn't even be a line on a job application that says black.
Sean Pinkston.
Look at Carolyn Parker, that's her forehead back there.
Sean Pinkston, Daniel Island. I'm also a candidate for District One Charleston City Council.
Lynn's watching back.
And what I would like to urge each member is to vote your conviction and to stay true to your previous conviction.
Yeah, I saw the police.
For those of you who voted against this commission previously, I encourage you to stand strong to your conviction. And if the residents of Charleston, District One for Charleston City Council elect me to stand and sit next to you, I promise you, I will stand next to you when this vote comes up again and will vote no to this commission. Stay true, stay strong. Merry Christmas.
Cal Stevens.
Cal Stevens, Wimbledon Drive. Ladies and gentlemen of council, I encourage you to continue to vote no to the special commission. Thank you.
Yeah, I give him points.
Sarah Marion.
Brevity. Yep. You playing bingo? Is that what you're doing with the breadstickers?
Hi, I'm Sarah. I know a lot of you don't have a dog in this fight, but I have two young children. And I came to another council meeting and someone said something about white people. And I got in the car with my children and they go, what are white people?
I gotta go.
And I was like, that's a great question, honey, because God created us all the same.
Oh.
I have a lot written.
Oh. The announcement for the book club, it will be virtual. It will go out in tomorrow's newsletter because there's some white women. I don't really want to collect white women, but I'm gonna have y'all collect y'all, collect y'all white women. I'm gonna have y'all, y'all don't even understand how much y'all gonna lead that conversation. Y'all gotta collect your Sarahs. You gotta, you gotta, you gotta correct them. You gotta collect them.
Written down, but I'm gonna skip to, I think, the most important part. The critical race theory does not fix the past, but it is creating hate, division and harming our future. Please do not teach my children that they are different from their neighbor. They don't know it. Thank you.
Elizabeth Watkins.
Look at Caroline in the back. You see her forehead back there by the mic?
Yes, I'm Elizabeth Watkins. I live on Queen Street in Charleston and I'm here against critical race theory. I grew up in a, in a city.
Racist town.
Very poor city.
Yeah, racist.
In Louisiana, in the sixties and seventies during the integration of the public school system, the forced busing. From a very young child in elementary school, I have been made to feel guilty for something that I have no idea what I.
So, wait a fucking minute, you getting a fucking, you getting a. Hold up. So did Sarah, but this sounds crazy. Wait a minute. So, Ruby Bridges, they done brought up a side of Shakur, they done brought up a lot of shit. So, so Ruby Bridges made you feel bad as a white person? Because white people were trying to kill a little girl for trying to integrate a fucking school? Is that what you, is that what she's saying?
Elementary school, I have been made to feel guilty for something.
Hold up. Tippy top?
Yes, I'm Elizabeth Watkins. I live on Queen Street in Charleston and I'm here against critical race theory. I grew up in a, in a city, very poor city in Louisiana in the sixties and seventies during the integration of the public school system, the forced busing. From a very young child in elementary school, I have been made to feel guilty for something that I have no idea what I, what I did, even as a young child. I have suffered emotional scars from hate that was taught at that time. That was fifty years ago. Why are we now still having this conversation? I beg you not to teach our children to hate one another.
So what?
I want to advocate for the children that are could be suffering for being, if it's the white children. We're all one race.
Thomas Pinkney, I believe it's Lowers or Lawrence.
She didn't get the hands. She didn't get the same, like, applause that everybody else got. They didn't like that one?
Thomas Pinkney Lowers or Lawrence?
I, mm. Right, position changer? Let me see. You said who? Well, you think somebody might be.
Thank you all very much. I will try and say a few things. I had not enough time here to get it all in. But I understand there's to be a vote coming up on moving the statue of John C. Calhoun out to California for a show and tell. I'm not sure.
Yeah.
How we put that into sync. But anyway, John C. needs to stay here.
Okay.
He is our man. He's a South Carolinian. He was probably, and I think truthfully, he was probably.
American Heritage Association is behind that. Is that Koch Brothers? Is one of those Koch Brother either similar or Jason, whatever? But that's what's behind that Calhoun group.
Done saying that. He did not have anything to do with the wars between the states.
Thank you for taking.
It happened ten years after he died. John C. is ours. He is not the day's Darth Vader.
He wasn't even born here.
He needs to stay here and his legacy needs to stay with him.
Time.
I'm a South.
Okay.
Tara Wood. Tara Wood.
God, a lot of Margie Taylor Greene look-alikes. Not a lot, too. I remember her.
There's less real racism in society than ever before. Racist attitudes have plummeted into historic lows.
Oh.
The number of newlyweds in an interracial marriage increased by five hundred and sixty-seven percent between nineteen sixty-seven.
If I get one more white person to suggest that fucking black people is gonna get us, get us, get us out of. If I get one more white person suggesting to me that fucking black people, white people fucking black people, or white people fucking anybody of color is gonna get me closer to liberation. I'm really thinking about, I've never hit anybody. I don't know, I'm just gonna push past you. I'm just gonna walk by you and like, girl, bye.
In two thousand fifteen.
Interracial marriages don't mean shit. You can be racist and still have a baby with a black man. You can be anti-black, you can be black, have a baby and be anti-black. Like, could we stop with this?
Economic and educational attainment have increased dramatically. Despite manifest progress in every front, CRT analysts teach that racism is worse today than fifty years ago because disparities between racial categories have not been fully eradicated. This ignores personal choice, moral agency and the importance of the decisions we make to guide our own destiny. In nineteen fifty, eighty-three percent of black families had a father present. By two thousand fifteen, the black illegitimacy rate had risen to almost eighty percent. Barack Obama said children who grew up without.
Oh my God, this lady is so racist, she don't even know it. Oh my God. She ain't, she won't talk about, she don't want to talk about like what broke up the black home. She don't want to talk about that, like the welfare, the myth of the welfare queen, even though more white people on welfare than black women, than black people. She don't want to talk about that? She don't want to talk about how like there were certain things you had to do to keep your benefits coming in under Reagan? She don't want to talk about that? Like, why wasn't the man in the home? And why, take it back to slavery, why wasn't the man in the home there? Oh, we wasn't allowed to marry. Okay. All right, you gave us a couple, gave us a couple crumbs, we started marrying and whatnot. Why wasn't the black man in the home? Oh, you kept arresting him. Okay, okay, what else, what else, what else? That war on drugs and all that other stuff. So why wasn't a black man in the home? Oh, you kept taking them out to breed them, right, right back, you know, you used to do all that kind of shit. Like, think about this shit, why the black man might not have been in the home in various stages, at various times in our history? Just think about that. All right, stop acting like this, did black fathers, don't do that. Like, that's very fucking disrespectful.
Not a father or five times more likely to live in poverty and commit.
Roman Haines.
Oh, she thought she was gonna read it?
Roman Haines.
Look at Christopher Gadsden. Look at my, um, they send it Christopher Gadsden back there on the portrait.
Good evening, Roman Hamis. I want to talk about the Equity Commission. Page twenty-five of the report would establish an unelected Board of Public Art to review and remove.
Yeah, 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 that's us. That was the History and Culture Commission, yep. But what's so funny is they're so fired up about this commission that has no power, that has not, that's not funded, that has nothing but volunteers behind it. And yet the bids, the bids are the things that's about to really change the makeup and how, how much they can access in Charleston. The bid, not one of them mentioned the bid even like really quickly. They not even concerned with the King Street bid. They concerned with this, though. This is, that's a boogeyman. That's not real.
Whatever piece of historic art or monument that we have in our city, including quite a few pieces in this room.
Yeah, behind you, Christopher.
The city has prided itself on historic preservation for almost a hundred years. We were the first. If this passes, we're now adopting something to actually remove history. Please stick to your guns, vote no on this committee. Thank you.
Cole D. There's no last name. Cole D. And is that anyone that we have in the waiting room, Velvet? Okay, we'll move on to Kava Compton.
Christopher Gadsden.
Hayward Hamilton.
Did that mean that?
James Bessinger.
Oh shit. They always call their names, but they never go to the mic.
My name is Hayward Hamilton from downtown Charleston. I would respectfully request that council vote against creating a permanent commission on equity. Creating critical race theory does not have a place in our city government as a tool that divides the people. It does not unite them. It is destructive and divisive and needs to be voted down. I would also request that a vote against sending the statue of Calhoun to California display at a museum that will betray our city and citizens in a poor light. It serves no educational purpose. Thank you for your consideration.
And just want to review the past two names, Cole D. and Kava Compton.
They sound like fake names.
James Bessinger.
Why don't you just stand up, you fucking coward? Let's see. He never stands up.
Tony Daniel.
Fucking coward. Let's see. Is that him running to the mic? Did he have to put his flag down? No.
Hi, I'm Kava Compton. I'm on.
Oh, Moms for Liberty.
Just ran up the stairs, sorry I got in here. I just want to say that I am completely disgusted by some of the rampant racism that I see going on in our city. It seems that certain individuals want to give priority to people based on skin color
Yep.
or sexual preference rather than merit.
Sexual preference?
This is contrary to the great Martin Luther King's dream and it is absolutely disgusting and frightening to me.
She out of breath, but she got enough.
Like most Americans, I was born and raised colorblind and to prioritize skin color or personal sexual preferences or character
What are you talking about?
is backwards, racist and illogical. And I do not want my taxpayer money spent on this.
Meanwhile.
We are parents, we are business owners, we are taxpayers and we are tired of being called racist.
Time.
You're racist.
Tony Daniel.
Tyler's such a fucking pussy. He always puts his name on a thing and never shows up, pussy ass bitch. I shouldn't say that, excuse me.
Counsel, when I was here two weeks ago, Ross Appel waved off somebody while they were talking. He said he didn't do it.
This is the dude, this is the dude. Sidebar though, I'm gonna strike your honor, your honor. I am, you swear pussy, because being, having a pussy don't mean you weak. I do stand by bitch ass. Bitch is, bitch has no gender in my, in this household at all. But more importantly, Tyler's punk ass didn't even get his ass up there. Love putting his name on that motherfucker. This guy right here, Harry Griffin. Where do you go and put this shit out? You went to fucking Staples? The self-serve kiosk? He can't stay.
Born and raised colorblind and to prioritize skin color or personal sexual preferences over character is backwards, racist and illogical. And I do not want my taxpayer money spent on this.
Meanwhile.
We are parents, we are business owners, we are taxpayers.
They spending your money on a lot of shit you wouldn't like, baby.
Racist.
Time.
I was born colorblind. No, you weren't.
Tony Daniel.
Good afternoon, counsel. When I was here two weeks ago, Ross Appel waved off somebody while they were talking. He said he didn't do it. There's a picture of it. Yep. Thank you very much. Four twenty-seven, twenty-one, at one twenty-eight.
Okay, CSI.
Also enclosed, go ahead, Mr. Griffin.
He gonna come back.
Also enclosed is state law requirements to close the road. Enclosed also is the minutes saying we're not closing or abandoning the roads. I've got a picture of traffic.
Yeah, his dad's neighborhood. Yeah, L. Cool J. Remember he brought his dad back up? He signed his dad up for comment?
Can't make it. Ross Appel in an effort to get around the fact that he said the roads weren't closed.
It's not funny.
That's what he said, it's an open road. See that dead end sign? That's an open road to everyone.
Time. Marcus McDonald.
Is Marcus there? I need to get some more po up. Okay, cool.
Hello, my name is Marcus McDonald. I'm lead organizer of Trust the Black Lives Matter. I'm also a substitute teacher at Burke High School and I'm on the board at Eastside Community Development Center. So I just want to come here and say, first off, a lot of y'all don't know MLK, so please stop using his name in vain. Bernice King, her daughter, his daughter said.
Let me give him that. Let me give him that. Put him in his place. Put him in his place.
The exact same thing. Please stop using MLK's name in vain because he would not supported all these people speaking against racial equity. He would have been right behind me, supporting me and pushing forward for this commission of equity. So that's what I'm pushing for today. And full support of the reintroduction of the Commission on Equity, Inclusion, Racial Conciliation. We've done a lot of work and talked with a lot of folks to make, get this far.
I can't say it, okay.
And really do something to empower the black community in the city that's often been ignored. Throughout this year, we've seen so many examples of the disparities in the system. I know a lot of the older folks here, y'all have seen so many older elders.
Okay, that's it.
Joel Sattler.
No, 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 don't do that.
Joel Sattler.
Joel is from Sycamore. Okay, well, I, yeah. I didn't mean to say no.
Can you hear me?
Oh, he's phoning in.
We can. Okay.
Excellent. Yeah, so I'm Joel Sattler, downtown resident, brick and mortar business owner. Just submitting comment on two topics on the agenda. The first one is in support of the Commission on Racial Equity. I definitely can feel for council with the number of people that have attached to some of the more politically volatile terms in it, but most of it is so boring and practical, you would think they were already happening. Please don't throw the baby out with the bathwater. Just keep moving forward and work with the co-chairs to develop something that I think we all actually want for Charleston. Second is just opposition to the King Street Business Improvement District. I think that you're going to be hearing a lot more in the next several days about all of the negative impacts that it will be having on Charleston. I don't really have the time to go into all of them now.
Good job.
I would warn any business owner that does not own their property on the peninsula that this will eventually price you out and replace you.
Time.
Key, key word to that. First of all, shout out.
Sully Sullivan.
Oh, go ahead, Sully. Sully, you in the house? I'm right, baby. All right, hopefully Sully's there or he's on the phone. I want to say this. Shout out to Joel. Shout out, shout out, shout out. Shout out to Marcus. Shout out to both of you. Did a great job, back-to-back comments. Hopefully we'll hear from Joel. I talked to Joel today. We went back and forth. I had to take a nap. I had to do my thing. But like he said, I want you to, I had this conversation too with another person. The fact, the, the, the fact that a lot of these businesses don't own the property they're in. Think Martha Lou's, think Dell's, right? Think shit. I don't, I don't know Republic. I don't think they own, they don't own the building, they are leasing it. That's gonna be a huge problem. So even if you think you can get, you think you all get along, you know, oh, this is great for business. If you don't own the property where your business is housed, you gonna be shit out of luck. You gonna be, you gonna be SOL. You gonna be priced the fuck out, period. Period. Great observation, great, great insight. I'm getting heartburn. Is Sully there?
Jania Holbra.
Damn, I want to see him.
This is Sully.
Yes, we can hear you.
Oh, there he is.
Can you hear me?
Yes, sir. Please proceed.
Hey, thank you, sorry, I'm calling in. I am in full support of the Commission on Racial Equity. It's something this city has needed for quite some time. And we're, yes, we are all in it together, which will help everyone be on the same page, create equity education for everyone. And it's time we support our black community more than ever. I'm also in complete opposition of the bid. It looks to me like a fresh pack of Xerox paper, white, really white, void of any ideas or substance. And if King Street is so great, then why are, you know, more than fifty percent of the businesses that need to improve part of the board of that? It should look more like young entrepreneurs and other people in the community.
Yep.
Thank you.
Good job, Sully.
Thank you, sir.
Jania Holbra.
Hello, I think I signed up to do online, but here I am. I had a whole thing written out for you guys, but after hearing so many people speak against the commission, I feel like it speaks volumes to how important it is to implement this commission on how much disinformation and how much opposition to this there is for seemingly no reason. And people are clearly misinformed on what this actually is, whether they have not read it and. And people are clearly misinformed on what this actually is, whether they have not read it in its full degree or whether they have just taken pieces out that fit their individual agendas. And I feel like it is so important after tonight, hearing everybody, and I've had a great conversation with someone on the opposite side of me downstairs tonight, how much it is misrepresented in our community.
And I'm gonna put 50 fucking percent of that on the city. I know I curse, but that doesn't make my point that I'm, the point that I'm about to make, the point that I'm about to make less valid. The city, you could have rolled this out. You knew this would be regardless of Trump, regardless of Q, regardless of any of that. You knew this was going to be a contentious, contentious issue. You saw what happened with the apology. You saw all of this before, when you wanted to add context to the Calhoun statue. You saw that. You had a responsibility, COVID or not, you had a responsibility to roll this out way more carefully. You guys are junior varsity, but you act and move as if, as if you're elite. You're not. And either you did this on purpose because you wanted this, you wanted to be defeated by a bunch of lunatics that come in, people from the fringes that come in and warp this conversation. Either you wanted that to happen or you didn't give a fuck. Either way, 50% of that, what she's speaking to, I'm agreeing emphatically with this young lady or with this person, excuse me. You know, I'm agreeing emphatically, but they had a responsibility to roll this out better than they did. They had a responsibility to do that. They did. They could have given, you know, good and well, that, that, that business alliance, you know, good and well, that business alliance has been forming unofficially with city officials, either sitting city council people or the mayor, given who's on that damn alliance. There's no way that, that the word about that, that group coming together didn't get to, to the city. You know, the city made sure to roll out the red carpet so they can present that, right? So why didn't they do that? Why didn't they roll out something? Why didn't they come out with a video? Why didn't they have somebody speak about what this really is? Why didn't you comfort people? Why didn't you, if you're going to use Mother Emanuel imagery anywhere, use it there. Use it there. Pissing me off. Any other city would have been like, okay, this, we gotta be, let's get the scholars together, let's get the museums together, let's, let's, let's talk about the, let's house this with the museum. Serious, like, like all this dumb shit is real, is so, I don't care if they didn't have a CEO in place. Put it with the museum. If you, the shit that y'all want to throw in that museum and the political importance you want to give the museum that it doesn't have, this is the time where you should have couched this with the museum because they didn't say boo about the fucking museum. They didn't say boo about that museum. Like, come on, man. Let's go. Let's get this right.
And how important it is to have something like this.
Time.
Thank you.
Allison Sutton.
Hi, I'm calling in. Can you hear me?
We can.
Yes, ma'am.
Right. My name is Allison Sutton. I'm a downtown resident and business owner. I'm calling tonight for two reasons. First, to fully support the commission and urge council to make the commission permanent. Second, to ask council to hold off on any further action in regards to the King Street bid. Both the commission and the bid will impact who is able to live, work, and access economic opportunity in Charleston in the years to come. The commission will ensure that racial equity and inclusion are central to policy. While the bid, as it currently stands, will only lead to further gentrification, black displacement, and wealth disparity. So again, please make the commission permanent, and please pause any approval of the bid and open it up for additional community input and refinement. Thank you.
That's why they're so like afraid of.
Jessica Wright.
That's why they're so like, like thinking that, oh, this is so racist is because they have not embraced history.
Jessica Wright.
Hi. Hi, can you hear me?
We can.
Hi, thank you. So my name is Jessica, and I'm calling to express my full support for the creation of a permanent commission on equity.
Somebody.
Pardon?
Sorry, I think that was an interruption. Please proceed.
Thank you. I'm calling to express my full support on the creation of a permanent commission on equity as well as approval of an amended hospitality fee budget for 2022 to refund the international, to fund the International African American Museum. To put it bluntly, Charleston owes its history and prosperity to its black communities, both past and present. This city, whether purposefully or as an unexamined byproduct of its structures, continues to operate on systems of oppression via gentrification and equal access to education and housing and the overpolicing of black and brown bodies. I support the commission on equity because it is past time for the needs of black communities to be prioritized in this city. And I support the African, African American Museum because we can no longer afford to whitewash and romanticize Charleston's history.
There you go. Good job.
Pringle Franklin. Pringle Franklin.
I just, I just got word on the inside that they purposely didn't.
I live downtown, and I'm here tonight to speak out.
Okay, another, yeah. I just got word from inside, and I do mean inside, like the city as well as like inside. It says we, they, yeah, like, they, they were, they were not going to have a bunch of speakers come up and present. And that's dope. I'm glad public comment. I'm glad Marcus showed up and Joel and everybody. That's important. But in terms of like, like setting Amber up again just to be, you know, targeted or sending somebody else up to be targeted from the city would be a, it would have had some, some complications there. So they're like, yeah, we intentionally did not rally speakers. That's important. I, I agree with that move.
Against the creation of a permanent commission on equity inclusion and racial conciliation.
They're done.
I love the idea. I love the name, but having read the report, there are just too many things in there that are proposals that are highly divisive, unrealistic, and frankly punitive to white residents. I don't see this ending well. Maybe we can go back to the drawing board and try to just get some of the better proposals that aren't so divisive and work with those. Thank you.
Gemma or Jenna White Smith.
Look at Lynn's leaving. Lynn's is leaving. I still see.
Tori Sanders.
Hello, can you hear me?
We can. Who's speaking?
Oh, this is Gemma. Hi, sorry, I pressed the wrong button on my phone.
Okay.
Please.
I am. Sorry, thank you. I'm a Daniel Island resident, and I'm here to speak in full support of the creation of the commission. Charleston was built on the back, the backs of black slaves that were forcibly brought to this country. And the racist history that has been created that is still present now in Charleston and in lots of the country. And I think it's time that if we want Charleston to continue to be the best city in America, that we need to prioritize our black and brown citizens and make sure that they have a place of equality and access to everything else that the white citizens are, are privileged to. I also want to speak in support of the funding of the International African American Museum. This way, our, our city's history is properly discussed and cannot go forward into the future, and we can't keep happening.
Tori.
Thank you.
Good job, Gemma.
Hello, my name is Tori Sanders. I am a board member on the Historic Ansonboro Neighborhood Association and an incoming 1L at the Charleston School of Law. I wanted to meet here today to show my support for the commission and as well as the IAAM. I'd like to share a quote from James Baldwin. "The great force of history comes from the fact that we carry it within us, are unconsciously controlled by it." I would love to see our city work to understand that unconscious control through the commission and through the museum. Thank you.
Good job. Thank you.
Jerome Harris.
It's sad that I had to look at people and say, oh, you got a mask, then you probably, you probably okay.
Good evening, council members and mayor. As you know, I served on the commission. We worked hard to come up with a set of recommendations for consideration for discussion about how the city of Charleston could truly reconcile its history as well as its past. As you talked about affordable housing today, as we talk about health disparities, all these things are real. And people from of African descent, as well as people of non-African descent, have that experience. This body needs a commission to be able to advise, consult, and engage the people who don't understand, in fact, what this dynamic is. I urge you to vote in support of the ordinance.
Everybody in support of it. I'm not one for respectability politics.
Mimi Wood.
But everybody who got there supporting it sounds so good. They not quoting scripture, no shade.
Evening. Thank you all for your service. My name is Mimi Wood. I'm from Isle of Palms. I'm here to say I'm not opposed to the commission necessarily, but I am opposed to critical race theory. Critical race theory was not exhibited by Charleston on six seventeen fifteen when Mother Emanuel Church was.
What the fuck? See how they.
Attacked. It was not exhibited at the Christmas parade. Charleston is unity and Charleston is mutual respect.
I'm gonna go on mute.
And CRT is not. CRT is divisive. It teaches hate and it is regressive, in my opinion. As far as James Calhoun, should he be looming over the city? Probably not, but in the words of Bishop Bullwinkle, should he go to California? Hell, no, to the no, no, no. Thanks very much. Happy holidays.
And those are all of the speakers that we had signed up. We did receive some comments online. We had 20 people who were opposed to the creation of the King Street bid and asked council to not support it without giving business owners in the community time to familiarize themselves with aspects of the plan. The already exorbitant rent will increase and lead to more.
Hi.
Of course, instead of.
I'm Mary Wayland.
Instead of local homegrown businesses. They also support the creation of the Commission on Racial Equity, Commission on Racial Inequity to inform the wedding and tourism industries of the real historical impact of African Americans in Charleston. Three people asked that city council not take permanent action on the bid along King Street as they have been known to historically increase rent, price local businesses out, and pave the way for more hotel and chain stores. There was a lack of diversity on the board, which was a major concern. Two people said to please vote against King Street development to preserve the charm of King Street and allow restaurants to continue outdoor dining. Seventeen people supported the Commission on Equity, Inclusion, and Racial Conciliation as a permanent commission in the city and a priority in the community. And we also received a letter from the Association for the Study of African American Life and History, which stated that African Americans have significantly impacted the social, political, and economic structures of the US and the world. The Charleston area branch of the ASALAH denounced the recent and transparent rejection by the city council of the Special Commission on Equity, Inclusion, and Racial Conciliation Report. Result of the report's acceptance, the city council rejected 10 months of research, inquiry, reexamination, critical thinking, and hard work by almost 50 of Charleston's rapidly declining number of black residents. The organization would continue to bring the community's attention to the information, opportunities for the purpose of collective instruction and development of possible remedies. And those were all the comments that we received.
Thank you. So that ends our public participation period. I want to thank everybody who came out tonight and share your thoughts with us.
I'm still here, y'all.
Wish you all a happy holiday and a Merry Christmas and stick around if you like, but thank you for participating. The next on our agenda is an update on the city's response to COVID-19. And I'm going to turn it right over to Tracy McKee. I know you've all been following a lot of recent news about surge in Omicron cases across the country and the world, but I think Tracy's just going to drill down and give us some local information. Tracy?
Yes, sir. Here we go. Happy holidays, everyone. So there's been 800,000 Americans that have now died from coronavirus. The last 100,000 have occurred in the past 11 weeks, which is 12 and a half percent. And we are running about the same in South Carolina as well. In the US, over the past 14 days, there's been a 20% increase in cases, and this is of the seven-day average. In South Carolina, that's been 11%. In Charleston County, the rolling seven-day average over the past three weeks has gone up 89%. And in Berkeley County, we're up 260% over the past three weeks. CDC still has both Charleston and Berkeley Counties listed as.
Sorry, y'all. Whew. Whew. Sorry. Thought we had a little family situation. Oh, my God, this fucking Omicron. Oh, my God, I'm over it. Got me on edge. I got some family members with Omicron, y'all. And they boosted and everything, and they just still just, I, I'm just, thought I, thought I had some, whenever my dad called me, my dad don't call me at night. So anyway, sorry. I know I missed the end. What happened? I missed the end. Okay, anyway. Y'all still there? Let me play.
Substantial transmission. We are on the cusp of going into the level of high transmission as well.
We're good.
And I do want to publicly thank our partners at MUSC and at DHEC who have provided us guidance consistently throughout this pandemic. And a lot of this information comes directly from, from our friends. So a little bit about the Omicron variant, there's been a lot of information swirling around lately. So South African modelers.
I'm glad that they're doing this. I'm gonna turn it down a little bit. Yeah, no, I'm good. Thank you, Joy. I'm good, I'm good. Yeah. Yeah, I got like, you know, took, took out a whole house in my family. So just, anyway. Yeah, my dad is good. We're good. We're Omicron free so, so far. I'm Moderna, left and right twixts is team Pfizer, nothing. They don't even react to the, they didn't even react to the boosters, like nothing. Boosters or the shot. I'm fine. Yeah, we're good. Just really, just pray for my family. But, okay. I'm not a good daughter. Yo, I wish I was. I am a good daughter. I just, whew, Sunday night, we had some fireworks, though. Ain't nothing. Shout out to all the daughters out there. Shout out to all the daughters out there. Moms, that mom and daughter dynamic. And I'm a dad, I'm a daughter, I'm a, I'm a mama's girl. I talk about my pop a lot. I'm really a mommy's girl. We're more alike than I like to admit. But yeah, they talking about the Omicron, eh, that's good. Here, that's good. They bringing Dr. Heat back.
So the boosters significantly amplify that.
All right, so, okay, yeah, triple shots. Yeah. Mrs. found out today that your brother had, is COVID positive, right? But did the Omicron, like, even though it's not like more deadly, it's, it's way more transmissible and it sound like it's, it's just breaking through the, it's like, it's just going to give you that, it's going to give you that old COVID. And, and we know that the vaccines never was going to keep us completely, you know, safe from, from, you know, getting COVID, contracting COVID and having symptoms. But it seemed to be like doing his thing, right? Oh, my gosh. What is that? Okay, LabCorp. Trouble getting, yeah, the test has been real crazy. I'm like, that's, book club is going to be virtual. That's all I can say. Friends, y'all have stuff planned for me in January. I don't know if I'm getting there. All right, so they, they're, at least they're acknowledging. I didn't see this on, I didn't see the Omicron discussion. We didn't get to the bid part, y'all. That's what we, now we hanging on for bids. Let me make this a little smaller and go back to these. So this is the, so they did the public comment period, and then I pulled up the PDF with the agenda on it. So public comment period, of citizens' participation period, petitions, is this petitions? This is, or is it down here? Is it the? And they say, okay, so they, oh, at K, they're going to present? Oh, wow. Okay, meeting was held on Thursday the ninth. Okay. That's on, that's online. I saw that meeting on there. I don't see COVID on here. Oh, right here. I'm sorry. Line is a fucking bad. COVID. City's response to COVID. Did y'all, same here, it's right there. Yeah, I up my masking. I got all them fabric masks that, um, Cypress said they were going to hand out. I got, I got all these masks that I just got ready, all these, all these reasonable ones. I got, I had to chill with the.
So this is just for information.
Disposable ones. So they just talking about COVID testing.
Items. I will just also share that the clinic, the vaccination clinic that we share with MUSC at 180 Lockwood is open six days a week. Monday through Friday is open from seven in the morning until seven at night. And on Saturdays from seven in the morning until four in the afternoon.
For testing?
You don't need an appointment. There's no charge. The price is right.
Let me, let me rewind that because that's important information.
With a viral test one to three days before your trip or you expose yourself to your family members. And just listing here a couple of resources for COVID testing as well as the South Carolina Vax locator, which you can use to find and get a vaccine or booster. And I'm happy to try to answer any.
Okay, so, so Evelyn, you dropped the LabCorp, LabCorp link, but there's some DHEC resources. but there's some DHEC resources, Vax Locator, and then COVID-19 testing to find a testing. You, as I'm gonna let this play, I'm gonna listen to the, we're gonna listen to the mayor again, talk about where that clinic is, give details about that. And I'm gonna go to DHEC while he talks.
Any questions anyone has?
Any questions? Tracy? So this is just for information purposes tonight. We don't have any
Why don't you just put test right here?
I will just also share that the clinic, the vaccination clinic that we share with MUSC at 180 Lockwood is open six days a week. Monday through Friday is open from 7:00 in the morning until 7:00 at night. And on Saturdays from 7:00 in the morning until 4:00 in the afternoon. You don't need an appointment. There's no charge. The price is right. And so whether you need vaccination from the start or a booster, you can go down to the police station. We won't arrest you.
Police station?
Go to the clinic there and get a free booster or vaccine.
Yo, that's the problem. You shouldn't have to go to a police station to get a booster. You should not have to go to a police station. I get first responders. I get it, y'all. Like, how many hospitals, how many MUSC buildings is on the damn peninsula? Colleges, city shit or state shit. College of Charleston is a state institution. Like, why are we going to the police? That's like that Lydia Cotton shit during the evacuation. Oh, if you need to evacuate, just come to the police. You can't tell undocumented people to just run into the arms of the police. You crazy?
So I got my booster the other day and I'm ready for Omicron. Councilmember seeking.
Okay, testing
They have administered
I had that in the last update.
I think it was 56,000?
It's, yeah, we've assisted, the city's assisted in quite a lot of vaccines over there.
I just paid that.
We've really had a lot of vaccinations and that didn't include the clinics that we did on the outside. So we're real thankful to MUSC for our partnership with them. And they're still doing business. It's still going strong.
Yeah, there's been a big uptick over there recently, so.
Yep. All right, Councilmember Jackson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You said, and we all know we're not taking any action or anything tonight, but could you just remind us how much longer the current emergency ordinance is in effect?
For meetings, we passed at our last meeting for 60 more days. And I could be wrong, but I think that's the only emergency ordinances that we have in place. One for city council, which is allowing Councilmember Brady to join us remotely tonight.
I know, right?
But also our zoning boards and BAR and so forth, they're still allowed to meet remotely for another 45 days.
And then if there were any, you know, more serious news or actualities that we're experiencing in our community, would we start over again with a new set of emergency ordinance, you know, measures? Or would you just add to that?
Well, all I can say is we're watching the numbers every single day and in constant contact with Roper St. Francis and MUSC and DHEC. And I think everybody's in a very careful watch mood. We're nervous because of people getting together over the holidays. We've seen that before. So we urge everyone to be safe and healthy and careful.
Yeah, I was asking more about the process. So if it came to be that, you know, sometime later in January, whenever the statistics, you know, were proving that we needed to take other kinds of emergency measures, would that same document then just be added on to? Or would you start over again with a new emergency ordinance? I don't remember how that came
Those two just apply to our meetings. But we have some earlier ordinances that are not active right now that we could go back to if need to. And the city has a Phase 4 protocol. We finally came out again to the least restrictive protocol, Phase 4. And, you know, we're going to watch the numbers. We may have to start going back to Phase 3 or 2 again, depending on what happens.
Even then, Evelyn?
All right. Well, thank y'all. Next up is our committee reports. First up is back to Councilmember Jackson, our Committee on Human Resources.
Here we go.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Let me just find my notes here.
Get it together, Carol. I'm joking.
Sorry. Yes, yes, we had a meeting of the Committee on Human Resources, of the council, Committee of the Council on Human Resources, met Thursday, December 9.
Caroline is behind her, y'all.
At 3:30 in the afternoon. We had a forum present. And also, we
Everybody's leaving.
Were grateful to have a few of the human resources staff members. And it was a, I want to say, big sacrifice of their own time and leave schedule. As we were just talking, the whole pandemic, season of the pandemic has been just an inordinate amount of work for the human resources staff in particular as we were, you know, helping the staff become vaccinated, register their vaccinations, listen to the rationale about being vaccinated. It all fell on the shoulders of human resources and Ms. McKee. So several of the staff people that would normally have been with us at the human resources committee meeting, you know, had delayed their long valued leave. And so we were glad to have a couple of them give us some of their leave time back that afternoon. The purpose of the meeting was for the committee to listen to a presentation by Ms. Amber Johnson, our manager of equity inclusion for the city. And she reviewed the most, I guess, summarized and reviewed the most prioritized set of recommendations that were created by the Internal Review Subcommittee of the Special Commission over the last year. And then Ms. Johnson worked with the Subcommittee Chair
So all the oppositions left.
Their members to agree that there were two or three things that they wanted to put on the radar of the Human Resources Committee on Council Committee for work next year. So basically, I think they fell into sort of three buckets that would naturally fall under the human resources work with our department heads and all of the hiring managers that we have. I think we could just think about, to think about our recruiting practices, our promotion and advancement from inside as people are in jobs and giving them every opportunity to be trained and promoted. And then our overall training of the whole staff in general as we move into an era of
That's interesting.
Wanting to be, you know, more in an aspect of
It feels like
Understanding one another, we're going to have
Within the human resources, like, it feels like they're using the study like, in really, I guess, practically applicable ways, like, ways that the city would engage with the study and its findings. So by engaging Amber to give a presentation with this focus on human resources and practices and hirings, it sounds like a very practical way to think and to use, and a practical way to engage the findings. And again, I want to maintain that I think the city should have positioned this commission from gate, from the word go, as a tool, as a list of recommendations. And even, I'm sure even if they would have made that abundantly clear, they still would have faced opposition. I know that. But I think if it were a series of, like, the, if city council could, those who were more, I guess, enthusiastic about the commission could have really found ways to show how practically you could apply the findings and recommendations, broken down by subject areas, right? History, public health, economic, you know, was it economic improvement or economic? I forgot. I forgot if it was economic improvement or something else. But like, you know, history, culture, like, you could have broken it up and then figured out, like, so, hey, these are the recommendations due for this. Hey, this is how the recommendation could help the city with hiring. Hey, these are the recommendations, like, I think that would have been a very practical way to do it. And I think also empowering Amber to have a bunch of one-on-ones or meet with certain bodies, I think that would have been helpful as well.
Of some sort of training that I understand is going to be available to the entire set of city staff, however that rolls out in the future. And so we wanted to entertain what that could potentially look like without making any decisions. So this is a for information only, but I think of it as the opportunity to basically launch a season of deliberation about the Subcommittee's recommendations or the whole commission's recommendations for our internal review for the city. Thank you.
I think Carol
Thank you, Councilmember Griffin.
I've heard a lot, thank you, Mr. Mayor, recognizing me. I've heard a lot of chatter the last few weeks that
Look at Alvin in the back.
Last couple of human resources committee meetings, there's been some talk of having some sort of tests for our city employees and our
Well, we know how you do with tests.
Whether or not they have racist thoughts. Can you talk a little bit about that?
Keep the gift bag right there.
Well, we've only had one human resources committee meeting that talked about anything
Look at Caroline Parker smirking in the back.
Commission. So it was only this meeting I'm reporting on right now on December 9. And basically, if you drill down into the, I haven't ever counted how many recommendations the Internal Review Subcommittee came up with, that is one, that people would be given the opportunity to understand their own
They can evaluate.
Place in the spectrum of understanding, you know, what they know about themselves
It's a voluntary evaluation.
To working in a community like ours that values diversity and inclusion. So no decisions have been made about any of that.
Right.
I think that is
I think so, Mexi.
In my understanding, Councilmember Griffin, probably one of the most sad
Marjorie Taylor Greene.
And potentially frustrating takeaways from people that worked very hard on the work of the Special Commission to think that people in the general public, based on a few reports in the media and however else news like that goes around, that so many decisions are, you know, have been made when in fact, we haven't begun to really study anything in depth. So that, I don't even know if that's the actual way. I'll be happy to ask Ms. Johnson to get into the internal review set of recommendations and circulate that so you can read that for yourself.
Councilmember Griffin?
I just want to
I just think she smirks every time, like, Harry talks or something.
Gotten to know a lot of our city employees and I'm proud of the
Keep the bag back there. He's such a
Really, I am.
Keep that. I'm glad that
From all of our different departments. I have never had an interaction with any member of our staff at any level where I felt like they were inertly racist or anything.
Why'd you call them cocksuckers?
And I think that at the end of the day, we should realize that we are very lucky to have such a diverse staff that we have. And we should promote from within because we have great people, regardless of skin color, that work their tails off on our behalf every single day. And I'd love to see that all of those people
Who else is there? Amber, okay, Amber.
Public Services Division work their way up and manage the city. Because they do an amazing job. Thank you.
John is
If I may, Mr. Mayor, I would totally agree with you, Councilmember Griffin. And I think the promotion and advancement and giving people that are already valued employees of the city every opportunity to continue to grow their own career and their own personal successes. I think that is one of the overall categories of recommendations that resonated with all of us. So I don't think there will be any disagreement on making something like that a big priority. Thank you.
Great. Any other questions or comments?
Yeah, they're in the council chambers. They just, I think they are.
Thank you, Councilmember Jackson, for your service as a chair of that committee. Appreciate it.
Yes, sir.
You're right. I mean
Next up is our Committee on Public Safety. Councilmember Shade?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Madam Clark, members of council. The Public Safety Committee met yesterday at 2:00. The items on our agenda included the approval of a memorandum of understanding between the Federal Bureau of Investigation South Carolina office and the Charleston Fire Department to include a member of CFD on the Joint Terrorism Task Force.
Oh, boy.
We unanimously approved that request.
All right, let's take a look at the
Approval.
I'm gonna turn it down a little bit. Let me do it here. Take it down a little bit. And now let's go look at the agenda. See where we at? So Carol just did the presentation of Commission on Equity Inclusion, da-da-da-da, for Committee on Human Resources. Okay, Committee on, so this is the Committee of Public Safety. This is the MOU that she just spoke about. Then the Rotary Club, then these items. Y'all, that's three. Okay, so number three is, number two is, well, they're on number two. Three is next, of course. Three considered two. And all the way down. I don't know if I'm gonna make it. I don't know if I'm gonna make it. Jesus. All right, I'm gonna turn it back up. It's sounding like his mic is not on. His mic is not on. Oh, boy. Yeah. They're in the chamber. Yeah, ain't nobody messed up.
So we do need to take action on items A and B, I believe. You had a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Councilmember Gregory?
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure that Chairman you knew that we've been working on attempting to amend the noise ordinance for how long? The last 12 years. So good luck.
Oh, wow.
What's that? Speak up.
Wait, what do they want to amend?
We are going to work. We're going to come.
They want to, they want to make it more
We have a new commitment from legal and planning, first part of next year, to work on that and bring us back some. Okay, next up is our Committee on Works, Public Works and Utilities. Councilmember Griffin was sitting in as chair.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The Committee of Public Works and Utilities met yesterday at 4:00 PM.
Okay.
We discussed a number of items. Item A, Acceptance and Dedication Redaways and Easements, both I and two I. They were both approved unanimously. And I would move that we approve both of those items.
Trying to get
All right.
Okay.
Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
Under our Public Service Department update, we had one item that was in regards to
Hopefully it's some, y'all.
Nonstandard service district agreement with Dominion Energy. And that was also unanimously approved. And I would move that we approve that, I hope.
Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Stormwater.
He's gonna point to this after he leaves. He's gonna point to this as like
Stormwater Management Update.
Like the things he got done at the door.
About the small projects that were completed in the fourth quarter. It's approximately about $400,000 worth of projects all over the city of Charleston. And also talking about a project in District 10 that hopefully will make it on to the small project foundation for 2022. And item C there was for information only. So, thank you.
Great. And if I may just add, the report on those recently completed small projects was very encouraging. You know, when we have projects and, you know, unlike some of these things we do with 10 and 20 and $50 million
Man, come on, it's a long meeting, man. Come on.
30,000 or 100,000 Really make a difference to those neighborhoods where those projects are completed. So we have a real commitment to continue that work.
Those are the projects, Mr. Mayor, that really show that we care.
Yeah, that's right.
I'm sorry. I know I'm not showing the meeting. I'm sorry.
Cleaning out their backyards and really
Sorry, sorry, sorry.
Be wholesome again.
Yeah, absolutely. All right, next up is our Committee on Ways and Means, as amended.
As amended, second.
Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Next is our bills up for second reading.
Oh, wow, they storming through.
Second.
Okay, 1 through 4. Any discussion on any of those?
That's L.
All in favor, please say aye.
Oh, wow.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Now for third reading and ratification of 1 through 4. All in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? The ayes have it. That leaves us with 5, 6, and 7. Have a motion to approve items 5 and 6 for second reading.
Okay.
Do we get a second?
Second.
Yeah. Any discussion or questions?
We gotta go back and read.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Now for, one, now for third reading and ratification. All right, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Lastly, we have number 7, that changes to our sidewalk cafe regulations. We got a second. Changes to our sidewalk cafe regulations. We got a second. And Mr. Summerfield is coming forward to make a few remarks.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. So on your desk this evening, you found a an amendment based on the conversation that we had. You had previously deferred this item so that staff could work with the councilmember Seekings and the mayor to go out and take a harder look and see if there was some additional flexibility after that, those meetings. We do believe there's some additional flexibility. And so you have a proposed amendment to to this amendment. So you have a second amendment that would reduce the sidewalk width from the building to the curb down to eight feet instead of 10 feet. And with that, we would request that that decided to be approved this evening if possible.
We have a motion on the floor, Councilmember.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just very briefly, Mr. Summerfield, I just want to thank you for taking time and listening to this council last time we met. Because as you all might recall, when we got this ordinance, there was also a memo given to us listing some of the businesses that had taken advantage of the outdoor dining provisions during our emergency ordinance and would not meet the requirements of this ordinance. And we literally went and walked the street, measured, thought about some opportunities to make some adjustments. And I believe everyone who wanted to stay in is going to be able to stay in now as a result of that work. So thank you for doing that. It was it was a good piece of work and the outdoor dining has really been a positive to the city and a boon to our businesses when they needed some help. So thank you for for listening. Appreciate that.
Any other? As amended. All right. Any other questions or discussions?
Empty in there.
All in favor, Councilmember Jackson?
I just have a question. I really appreciate that you were able to do that, drill down, get get all the people who had taken advantage of the temporary ordinance back into a permanent format. So and so my my question is, so new people, new business owners will be able to come in, right? This is not grandfathered in, even if they're, because we've we've adjusted permanently the requirement of the H P. Okay.
Absolutely.
Certain businesses, be man. Don't even, right?
Any other questions? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Now for third reading and ratification. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Next, we have bills up. Oh, we gotta go back to eight and 10 on our public hearings.
Second.
Ten on the public hearing section E.
So many unopened.
Any discussion or question on eight and 10? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it. Okay, so we got them annexed and zoned. But next up will be our bills for first reading. We have a motion to approve and a second to approve the Business Improvement District for King Street. Any questions or?
Come on.
I do have one. I just want clarification on whether the workforce housing, photo housing was actually amended in this order.
Yeah, sir. Robert?
No, I'm with you.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, Councilman, yes. So we did, you will find in the backup material under the the methodology, you will find accountants will understand it, the rest of us will not, but there is a calculation that exempts the square footage of any bona fide affordable housing project, which basically means it's been registered with Community and Housing Housing and Community Development, that it would, that square footage is exempt from any application of the assessment.
Thank you, Mr. Southern. Thank you, Councilman Mike.
Oh, oh, so we all were, we were listening to your very good comments about this at the last minute. Councilmember Sacrament.
I think this is working. It is. At last council meeting, I did speak in favor of the bid concept that was presented to us and I was encouraged. Local business owners on and off King Street. A lot of local folks. As a small business owner who's looked for frontage space on King Street, I can tell you, in order to expand my concept, I couldn't afford the lease today. I couldn't afford the lease five years ago.
No.
I just want to make sure that as this bid is created, that we do build in some reassurances for local small business owners to to not pre of access.
They gotta work on the mics.
I can, I can hear you, but do try speaking right into the mic or close to it.
You gotta be on it like this, like all the way.
Yeah.
Just to let council know, we we are planning to replace the microphone next year.
Better call Cutter.
We get the mileage increase. Couple of questions that I have is who's going to manage the day-to-day operations of the bid? Who's going to lead the charge from a strategic direction from the city?
Do we need a sub municipal?
Is it a downtown alliance? What safeguards we have in place for this particular bid to ensure we don't make it harder for not just small business owners, but a particularly minority and women?
Does Carl understand? Real quick, does he, now, Evelyn, I'm distracted. Don't yawn. Carl. I know you sat through hundreds and hundreds of hours of meetings, but come on, dude. I want to see you by cuspids.
Owners who want to do business on King Street.
Sorry.
Another question is, will the building owner simply pass the tax increase onto the business owner who's who's there? So that's another thing. I just want to make sure if if the owner of that building is going to see a tax increase, that they pass that on to to the tenant. Lastly, you know, it's theoretically possible that the bid can help a community and help businesses grow through actions like improving garbage collection and putting on public events and providing tools.
Yeah, if it was about trimming Christmas trees, I'm cool.
The bureaucracy. But what I've read in just in the week that I have is is too often bids have turned against the businesses they were meant to serve. So making the cost of entry into the newer area even higher for local merchants.
Better be talking right.
And essentially lacking that transparent transparency needed to instill trust from the community.
You better be talking right, Jason. I told you, we were gonna watch him, though. We was gonna watch him, right? I'm right now.
Which goes back to my question. Is it the city that's going to manage that bid, or is it going to be the alliance and nonprofit? I'm gonna vote yes for first reading, obviously, tonight on this bid. But I hope between now and second reading takes place, we can include some of the safeguards that I articulated. Thank you.
Kind of talking at both sides.
So, Mr. Mayor, just just for everyone is peace of mind, a couple of questions there. So one of the things that still has to be done after the adoption of the bid is.
I gotta say it one more time. I know y'all hate, I know y'all probably, well, redundancy is a part of the brand, so are the typos on Twitter. If Amber would have gotten a portion of this type of allowance allowance to speak up and rebut things and to answer questions, it would have been awesome. It would have been awesome. I just gotta keep saying it every time I see it.
The agreement between the city and the C D A, which would be the nonprofit that would manage the day-to-day activity. However, so that still has to be done. So those safeguards that you would like to see in.
We're gonna watch him. We're gonna watch Jason Sacrament. You couldn't, you couldn't be more right, though. Say the safe thing upfront. Acknowledge all the concerns that people called into you. But we also, that's why we need to hit them, hit that jack and let them know we watching how you vote, too. It's not enough to just give lip service to what we said. Because Carol did that shit, too, with that with that that protest ordinance. And then when it came time to vote, I was like, what the fuck? What's going on? You know, you had Chief Reynolds cop on there and just say some some shit that wasn't even accurate. You're like, oh, okay, a gun, a gun? You had mad guns during, you had mad guns every Sunday at the damn battery.
There.
But like, you know, I'm sorry, I'm a little tipsy. I ain't gonna lie.
Spelling out and specifying certain requirements that the city has for the C D A in terms of reporting back to the city when they come back for review by the by the city, all of that will be spelled out in in that. So that strategic part, that that's what the council and staff will work on. The day-to-day operations of the bid, that would be what their board is. And I would just put out there, because I've seen some of the social media on this. This, the C D A has been very, very strategic in ensuring that their board is not just ownership-based. They have members who are are pure renters. So they have folks that own and operate on King Street. They have other folks who are just operators on King Street. They don't own their buildings. They have folks that represent.
So those not the big boys, though.
You know, all segments of the the business community.
They're letting them in, but they're not gonna have the power.
That are office users. You have retailers. You have restaurateurs. You have hotelers.
They're gonna use the optics of looking inclusive, but the people that actually have the power watch are gonna be those that actually can yank a fucking building from up under a business owner or an entrepreneur. And and also, mind you, this also be used. So the C V B is already hostile to sit to to organizations that are not signing up to be part of bullshit paying the fees, right? Right? The C the the C V B is already hostile to non-C V B businesses. And hostile in a myriad of ways, right? Because if they really cared about business, it wouldn't even be membership-based. They would be supporting all businesses downtown Charleston, the peninsula, or throughout Charleston. But now they're gonna, like we, like we read in the, like we read in the article this morning, cloaked in, oh, nonprofit, cloaked in, oh, all all businesses, not just people who own, not just people, not just the developers, right? Right? Listen to the bullshit.
Hotelers, people who run. Thank you. So so they they have been made efforts from that standpoint to be very inclusive. One of the conversations we are having with them is, again, being a little bit more direct and inclusive language in in conversations about the board makeup going forward. And then one last thing, the city does have a seat at that table. We are on their board as non, non-voting members. So we are always participating in those discussions that the board is having.
Give up this power.
Have a voice at that point.
Another pop.
At this time. So again, one of the next steps that we'll have to do after the adoption of the ordinance, assuming that the district is created, would be to create that management agreement with the nonprofit between the city and them. And that has to be negotiated.
And this nonprofit, this is crazy.
This this action actually basically sets up the legal framework for for this district to exist. And then we get to the business of forming the exact
Like, like, seriously, let me, let me pause it. Like, on, on, from a, from a power perspective. From a, from a power, given the changing, given the changing demographics of Charleston, the rapidly changing demographics. I'm not even talking about, we are, we already talked, the horse is out the barn in terms of black people leaving Charleston, right? Leaving Charleston and the peninsula. I'm talking about from a, from a power perspective, if you're on city council and if you wanna, if you have ambitions to run for mayor, why would you want to take away your power? Like, why would you want to take power from that governing body and gift it to business interests? Even if you benefit, even if you own a restaurant and you get a kickback and you'll be, why would you want to cede that power to this other submunicipal? I'm gonna, I'm gonna exhaust that fucking term, submunicipal body. Why would you do that? I don't understand. Like, why would you just neutralize yourself? To me, that's what it also will lead to. And 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 that's that's largely how how Mayor Teklenburg used to engage us. I think he's being a little bit more honest than than he used to be. He doesn't hide behind the all shucks and seer sucker as much as anymore, right? I'm talking about that affect he puts on and all that other stuff that he does. You know, but but he used to be like, oh, shucks, I don't know who owns the creek. I don't know who owns Calhoun. I don't know we, I don't know who owns. Like, that's how Mary used to, like, he used to say that, like, oh, our hands are tied. I think that's part of the strategy, but that in turn would make him power, make the him and the and the and the and the city council powerless or a little bit less powerful. I don't get that upstairs neighbor is bugging.
Councilmember Jackson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And thank you, Mr. Summerfield, for reminding us that there are several, you know, key negotiations, agreements, participations to be had before this is in operation. If Councilmember Sacrament hadn't said what he said, so I'm gonna associate myself with his precautions, I guess, was a word that he used, that I I'm gonna vote for for approving this first reading. But I do hope that maybe instead of just pushing it through at the next meeting of council in January, that you all could agree to have an extended, a little more extended timeout to let the business owners, especially the local and small business owners, feel like they've been thoroughly educated. I was encouraged to hear Mr. Warner say during his petition time to us that they now have 50 business operators who are not property owners on board.
But why isn't anyone talking about bids?
I do think, like, and I will disclose right now, I'm I'm gonna be going on to the Policy and Advocacy Committee for the Low Country Local First, so I'm gonna be a big advocate. I have been since long before I was elected.
It's infuriating, Joy. Infuriating.
Support the very local businesses of this community that basically puts Charleston on the map.
Right? You're out.
And I I know that, you know, King Street has been a financial challenge to small and local businesses for the last, let's just say, 20 years, but certainly in the last decade since I've been part of the community. And I I really just feel like this has got to be a cooperative effort. If you don't have every person who is paying rent or owning property that runs a business or some sort of venture on King Street proud and engaged in being part of this, then it's gonna be like Big Brother taking over again. So I I don't think we want that. That's not at all. But I mean, on the city side, we're turning over to private venture, the the care and feeding of the property owners and the businesses and our reputation on King Street. So I know we have our hearts in the right place on why to do this. Another thing that I think would be very educational for for the community and ourselves would be to maybe have someone take a look at the history of bids around the country. We have heard several comments that over time, business improvement districts tend to, you know, become more formulated, less nimble, less favorable to the startup businesses. And especially since we are bending over backwards to be a nurturing, fostering city to to small minority and women-owned businesses. I think we would not want that to be the, you know, shadow hanging over this the startup venture. So maybe just take some more time to do that kind of education so we know the pitfalls of what we're gonna avoid as the sponsors of a of a very innovative and supportive.
I'm actually trying to find some more resources, y'all, on bids.
For the, the place that we all know is, you know,
My people at Pratt.
Breadbasket of Charleston in this day and age. But I I do feel like a timeout to educate more and more of the businesses. Low Country Local First is very eager to to volunteer, to help bring in people that maybe feel like they haven't really heard the full story of what has happened.
Oh, so they're in favor of it.
And I think it could be a very positive process.
Wait, 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 whoa, whoa, whoa. Low Country Local First is in favor of this? I'm very disappointed if that's true. I'm very disappointed if that's true.
Thank you.
Like an info session or or like? The mic ain't on. What? I'm starting to think these mic shits is on purpose. Can't hear. Oh, he don't even have it. Oh.
An order, order to repeal and replace chapter two to adopt a Human Affairs and Racial Conciliation Commission. This is an amended version that has been shared with council today.
What up?
Councilmember Gregory.
New follower. What's up?
Second.
Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
What's that? Mic seeking? I'll read it in the paper tomorrow. She gonna read the count. She gonna read it.
Councilmember Shealy?
Nay.
Councilmember Sacrament?
Yes.
Okay.
Councilmember Mitchell?
Aye.
Councilmember Brady?
Aye.
Councilmember Gregory?
Aye.
Councilmember Waring? Councilmember Seekings?
Aye.
Councilmember Shade?
Aye.
Okay.
Councilmember Griffin? Councilmember Appel? Councilwoman Jackson?
Yes.
He abstained.
Mayor Teklenburg. The motion passes.
Okay. Right? Can't hear shit.
Yeah. Good idea.
What did, how did Ross vote? I couldn't hear.
Next, we have an executive session. Have a motion to go in executive session. Before we do, I would like to share with council that this will be the last full meeting for both Councilmember Griffin and Jackson. But I understand that Councilmember Griffin may not be able to join us at the the partial next meeting that he would be able to attend. So I'd like to call on Councilmember Griffin.
Thank you.
And 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 before you speak, I just want to thank you for your service to the city, to your district. We're gonna have a nice plaque for you that we plan to have for you at the next meeting. We're gonna have a nice plaque for you that we plan to have for you at the next meeting, so I'll have to get that to you separately. But, uh, Harry, thank you for your service.
Thank you so much, I wanna thank each and every one of you for the pleasure to serve. Along with all the council members that aren't with us today, but I served for my first two years. More importantly, I wanna thank District 10, greatest honor of my life.
I'm being mature.
Seeing y'all continue the great work of our city. Thank you all.
Wouldn't, wouldn't it been nice if he would apologize and called them all? Sea suckers, like, wouldn't it been great? Look at this bitch, oh my God.
Councilmember Sacrament.
Standing ovation for a Proud Boy? You look dumb.
Harry, I just want to say it's been a pleasure. You haven't.
What?
From a personal standpoint.
I'm glad your mic don't work, Jason. I'm glad your mic don't work. Why would you, like, why? Why?
That they respect them, and I just want to say I respect you. Um, I look forward to you doing good things.
Okay.
You got a bright future, you may disagree politically.
Bright future?
Respectful, and that, you can't take that away from anybody, so thank you.
He's not respectful. He, what, what are you talking about? He didn't use.
You know, they wonder about us and why? All the time. I love you too. Um, you know, while we are in different places sometimes, uh, I do think that, you know, your heart is always in the right place.
I can't.
And that's the part of you that I appreciate most of all.
What is going on?
Be missed.
What is going on? I'm not saying.
Your work is not done.
Let me just say this, I, look, I know they're colleagues and, and it's just like the Supreme Court. Ruth Bader Ginsburg used to hang out all the time with, um, what's the one that died? You know what I mean, the one that died, whatever, whatever, like, that Merrick Garland was gonna replace. Like Scalia, like, they, you know, that, and, and even the Republicans versus the Democrats, that shit is WWE, right? All this shit is WWE, but come on, Harry humiliated that, he sullied that governing body. He sullied that seat. I'm just gonna say, yo, um, fam, the edible arrangement was gonna be here, but, um, the way my debit card is set up, like, I would have just, no, seriously, I would have been like, yo, um, got Ricotta, I got the Ricotta cookies platter, uh, in the break room. All right? Take it easy. Joy, are you drinking? Oh, I love it, yes, girl, yes.
Thank you for being.
I'm sorry.
All right.
This is how history gets promoted. Paul, Paul, yes. I wish it was a fucking roast, that would have been, oh, so this executive, I'm just fast forwarding it.
I believe that too, God bless you, thank you. All right, next we go into executive session, I'm gonna restate, it's for the purpose to receive legal advice regarding the acquisition of 10 Concord Street.
Oh, shit. And that's private? I stopped it a lot. Uh, all right, kiddos? I can't believe they did that, you, I mean, I, I, I'm not trying to trip, I'm gonna do it, I'm, I'm not trying to trip, let's play Harry's greatest hits. Fuck that, fuck that. And I, I'm all for like the quorum in the workplace, y'all. This, this the way I'm, like, I don't, I don't bring this to my professional setting, right? The way that when I show up as you, as me, right? I don't drop F-bombs at work, I'm very courteous at work, I, even with people I can't stand. I'm the queen of working through personality conflicts. What Harry did was not personality conflicts. He literally supported hate groups. How can you respect somebody who, who worked with the hate group? I already was just like, man, come on with Sacrament, come on, I respect you, your heart is in the right place, Gregory. What the fuck? Harry Griffin, I'm just gonna put that in YouTube. His, his fucking greatest hits. Getting arrested for a suspected DUI, right? Harry Griffin leaked calls, they even leaked.
As the councilman is on the hot seat after leaked audio appears to reveal him using explicit language to belittle fellow council members. This is Katie Turner, has been breaking down the controversy surrounding Harry Griffin all day and joins us live from Charleston City Hall with the latest. Katie, you've spoken with several leaders about this.
Uh, Katie.
Yeah, Brendan, I have, honestly, he is receiving support from some of his colleagues on council.
Which is weird.
But at the same time, thousands of petitioners are saying he needs to lose his job.
Thousands.
Known to take a passionate stance in the council chambers. 25-year-old councilmember Harry Griffin caught in a controversy. Thousands say an online petition should cause him to lose his seat. It all started when Griffin's face and name appeared on a flyer saying he'd be a speaker at a march involving groups including one accused of having white supremacist values.
I saw that Nancy Mace T-shirt.
The protest itself caused a stir in downtown Charleston Saturday with groups of protesters dueling. Griffin was not in attendance. Trying to set the record straight, he sent out a letter saying he never attended that event, he didn't know much about the event, and does not support white supremacy.
It's probably not in my best interest to come out there for this one.
But this leaked audio shows a different take on the interaction.
And at that point, I said, you know what? There's a lot of good [BLEEP] in this.
The conservative outlet, Overton Group, says that's Griffin talking. And the voice appears to side with the groups Griffin says he didn't know much about and goes on to criticize city council.
You know, I'd have to do it in every meeting, you know, I wanna, I wanna tell some of those guys that [BLEEP] can hate him. And I wish I could see him out on the street.
Councilmember Keith Waring has worked alongside Griffin for the last three years.
And he comes to bullshit.
Griffin as youthfully exuberant.
Yeah, dumb, that's a dumb take, right? Not watching that. Four months ago, he was laughing with Harry? Hmm, you wonder why I go on and on about that shit? One month ago. Damn, he had Harry on quitting closes quite a bit. Some people don't need to be platformed at all, at all. This gets crazy, like, come on, that ain't even like the worst of it. Anyway, y'all. Mikey, what you say? Yeah, the unfortunate part is that we didn't make the certain, we didn't plan for Carol. Like, that's a, that's a kinda, I feel like, I don't know, I've got really, 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 really interesting, um, views on that shit, like, like, losing Carol's seat and then getting rid of him, we're back where Squirrel, and now we got someone that people are not gonna challenge as much cause it's a woman, even though she's adjacent to all these really problematic groups, the, the onus is on us to figure out how to effectively get that messaging out, like, we see these conflicts of interest. I think I'm in, I'm encouraged to do more deeper, deeper dives into people's financial interests. I'm talking about publicly, publicly disclosed stuff, I'm not talking about going through people's personal bullshit. But anything that's public record, I think tying people to certain interests is going to be the way to illustrate. Maybe if people don't like, if they don't enjoy my commentary, they don't enjoy Marcus's breakdown or his responses, they don't enjoy just, you know, Jason, Justin, whomever, um, engaging on these issues, then we're just gonna keep showing you the facts and showing you who, who is bankrolling these people? Who's, what's the money and the power behind these people? Um, because, um, I know that Caroline Parker chick is, is gonna be very, not even problematic, that's, that's understating it. She's gonna be really, um, they're gonna, they're gonna just try to just act like because she's a woman, it's not as harmful. And it's important for us to point out, just, just pu, point out the facts, that's it. All right? Yeah, all right, y'all, I'm gonna take it down, um, shit. I'm gonna check in on my fam. Got another text message a minute ago, so everybody's cool. Um, but anyway, thanks for rocking with me, I'll see you in the morning. We might need a palate cleanser tomorrow, might have to talk about something fluffy, it's almost Christmas, I know, I know, y'all be like, Mika, it's almost Christmas, when you? Nope, I'm gonna stop on Thursday, all right? Christmas is Saturday, right? I'm gonna stop on Thursday. So, yeah, I'll be live streaming tomorrow and live streaming Thursday, all right? Book club announcement coming in tomorrow's, uh, tomorrow's newsletter, if you don't have newsletter, please go to Instagram, go to the bio. The link is in the bio, check it out, see you mañana, I love y'all. Bye.